Legally held by way of a virtual meeting by using Microsoft Teams. To convene the meeting that was suspended due to technical difficulties for the September 28th, 2020 meeting and to hear and to act upon bills. At this time, I would like to ask Clerk Jones to add instructions regarding this meeting in terms of public hearing purposes.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me? Okay. Okay, I will, I would first of all, I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce and welcome our new Deputy Clerk Roger Pinto, who is in, started his first day with council meeting. So, and he's hit the ground running. So, I want to take this time to introduce him. He is an RU grad and he is very acclimated into the community. So, just please join me in welcoming Roger to our clerk staff.
Welcome aboard Roger.
All right, I will begin by saying, good afternoon, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good audio quality for council members and yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on a specific agenda item, please submit your requests in the chat. Directions to do so are also in the chat. We ask that you provide your full name and address as those are required for all speakers at in-person meetings. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input, please insert the following. Again, I reiterate, your full name and your address. You will be given five minutes to speak. For citizens that wish to speak during the privilege, I'm sorry, you will be given three minutes to speak. For citizens that wish to speak during the privilege of the floor, please insert the following into the chat and the council president will call on you during the relevant time for public input. Insert your full name and your address. And then also, at that time, you will be given three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Sure. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Present.
Councilmember McBride?
Present.
Councilmember Warner?
Here.
Councilmember Tezka?
Yep.
Councilmember Nizgowski?
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Present.
Councilmember Hammond?
Present.
President White?
Present.
All present.
Thank you so much. I would now like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules to advance resolutions ahead of dissolving into the committee of the whole.
Uh-huh.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded that we suspend the rules so that we can advance the resolutions ahead of dissolving into the committee of the whole. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tezka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. We'll now move to the resolution portion of our meeting. I would like to entertain a motion to table Resolution 20-31 until the October 12th meeting as requested by the petitioner. So moved. Is there a second? Second?
Second.
Is it moving second? Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tezka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you so much. Clerk Jones, will you now please read Resolution 20-32?
Resolution 20-32, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 4303 Technology Drive, South Bend, Indiana, 46628, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Tri-Pac.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, there is. The, sorry, I was gonna say personal finance. The Community Investment Committee met last week and bringing us forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you so much. I will now ask the sponsors of the center to present Resolution 20-32. I do ask that you state your name and your address, please.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. This is Dan Buckenmeyer, Director of Business Development for the city of South Bend, offices on the 14th floor of the city county building. I just shared a screen. I wanted to let the clerk know, and I put this in the chat, my co-presenter or the petitioner has been trying to get into this meeting and he keeps getting a message.
Hey, Daniel, Daniel, I just got in. Daniel, I just got in.
Oh, okay, we're here. Very good. I will move forward then, Paris, and I'll do a quick presentation. Also, council, if it pleases the council, I'm going to present for both 2032 and 2034 simultaneously, knowing that you will vote separately, but I will just give this presentation for both.
Do we need to have a motion to that effect?
I'll move that we hear 2032 and 2034 together.
Is there a second? Second.
A second.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Here is some feedback. I'm not sure who has the feedback. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we hear you, but it's like somebody's not muted.
Right. That's what I'm looking for. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tezka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Mr. Buckenmeyer?
Is Mr. Buckenmeyer speaking?
I'm sorry, I was muted. I was just wanting to thank very briefly council for moving resolutions to the front for the benefit of our business people so they can push back to work today. This is Tri-Pac. Tri-Pac is a company that moved into South Bend just over two years ago when they moved into their present location at Nims and Kenmore. We did a, gave them a little assistance in relocating their business from Michigan into South Bend. They have far exceeded expectations. I'll allow Mr. Shaw to give more details on how many people they're employing and what some of their expansion plans are, but they've moved into a few different buildings or leasing a few different buildings. This will allow them to purchase a new building and make a few million dollars in investment in it. Let's talk about that investment first, if I can get my, there we go. So, the personal property investment is the capital equipment and so on that they will be utilizing in the new location, which is over on Technology Drive, far southwest corner of the city. Two million dollars in new equipment. They do a lot of medical things, packaging, which again, I'll allow Mr. Shaw to get into, serving the over-the-counter and prescription market. And I'm not going to read you, you can see all this, but of course, zero current taxes in this, at this point, because it's new capital equipment being purchased, 20,000 to 22,000 a year after. The building that they are purchasing to put this into then, which is the real property tax abatement, which is the bill number 20-34. This is an existing building, but it will be a new manufacturing facility for them. Actually, I believe that's a misprint. I think it's over 60,000 square feet. They put two, over $2 million into the purchase of it. They will do another million upgrades just to the building itself before they put $2 million in equipment in it. They anticipate at least 20 new jobs. If they keep growing at the pace they have been, I think it'll, they'll again eclipse those numbers. And expected increase in tax revenue as you would expect from those kind of investments. I'll stop there and allow Mr. Paris Shaw to jump in and he is the petitioner and allow him to say a little bit about it. Mr. Shaw, you always, we always start with name and address and then you can go on.
Hi, good afternoon, guys. My name is Paris Shaw. I'm here, the director of Tri-Pac here on 3333 in North Kenmore Street in South Bend, Indiana. I am very grateful and appreciative for, you know, your team to get this meeting set up and for the consideration. You know, as, you know, Daniel mentioned a little bit, you know, we moved in the South Bend about two years ago. We've, you know, enjoyed being a part of the South Bend community and the South Bend, you know, Chamber of Commerce. We, we primarily manufacture, contract our OTC medical devices for very, very large companies all across the country and our products actually reach, you know, Canada, Europe, Asia as well. We have been on an accelerated growth path. So, you know, we are trying to hit actually our 2022 targets this year, primarily due to some of the windfall due to COVID. Some of the products that we manufacture actually go into medical supply chains. They go into the health and welfare of people and improving their lives and doctors' lives as well. So, definitely very appreciative of the city considering some abatements here. You know, we do have a lot of capital expenditures ongoing and, you know, we anticipate probably around next year, end of next year, you know, as long as the city, city wants us, you know, we'll definitely continue our growth in the region. And I think this year, we are close to about 150 people already in hiring and we anticipate we probably close the year with an additional 20 people on top. The new building actually helps us in consolidating some of the buildings that we've leased, which is becoming very inconvenient because now we have our staff and our resources spread over four different facilities. So, this will help us in almost consolidating all our efforts and all our strength into two facilities now and, you know, hopefully we can keep building on it as we go by.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. So, that concludes our presentation. Of course, this comes to you both of these, 2032 and 2034, with a recommendation from staff and we hope for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now go to councilmembers. Do you have any questions of the petitioner or Mr. Dan Buckenmeyer? I will swing back if you would like to make comments after the public hearing portion. Any councilmembers, if you have any questions regarding Resolution 20-32 and 20-34. Councilwoman Laura Hammond?
Thank you. I was just going to ask the petitioner, what is anticipated as we hopefully find ourselves moving away from our current COVID situation? Will you be able to maintain the production levels that you're experiencing now?
He's muted.
I think you're muted, sir.
Oh, sorry about that. I always forget. Yeah, so in fact, most of our products are maintaining their sales prior to COVID as well. The product categories that we have help us in being quite stable despite economic downturns or war or even COVID. Again, I think I mentioned that these have already always been our targets and we are already in the product categories that we are always going to be in. The only thing that the current environment helped us was to expedite some of our asset purchases and help us grow into those product categories that we were not really expecting to get into until probably 2022.
Thank you.
Councilman Kenneth Lee?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Shaw. Just wanted to know, again, it dropped out when I was listening. What is the anticipated amount? How many people do you have currently and what is anticip-
Anticipated?
Yes, that word. A group of people that you will be hiring, total?
So, so as you actually visited our facility, so you know, we do rely on temps a bit, but I think already we probably have close to about 140 people directly on our payroll and I think we have another 50 of temps. So, as we keep going down the path that we're going down, we'll likely start converting some of those temps into permanent employees anyways. And then I think the new building that we have at Technology Drive would hire at least 20 full-time people at that, at that facility.
All right, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Councilmembers, are there any other questions that you would like to ask in regards to Resolution 20-32 or 20-34 prior to going to the public hearing portion? Seeing no one. I'll now move to the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak in support of Resolution 20-32 and 20-34? Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak in support of these two resolutions?
President White, I do not see anyone waiting to speak in support or in opposition of this resolution.
Thank you. The public hearing portion is now closed. I would like to go back to the councilmembers to see if there are any councilmembers who would like to make comments prior to moving to asking for a vote in regards to these two resolutions. Any councilmembers who would like to make any comments at this time? Councilman Kenneth Lee?
I would just like to say that I had the privilege of touring the facility with Mr. Dan Buckenmeyer and another person from his staff and we had the opportunity to meet Mr. Shaw and really look in-depth at this, this company. They're hiring, they're hiring a lot of people and they're doing a lot of great work. The hand sanitizer that the city of South Bend distributed was created there in their, in their labs and so they've got a great problem where they have to turn down business. So, we don't want them to have to turn down business and I think this is a great opportunity for a company to grow. We've, we've often said how Elkhart is a place where people have to drive to Elkhart to have a good job, but I really believe that they're going to be one of the companies that will be able to give people a very good wage and won't have to drive to Elkhart to do it. So, I'm excited about Mr. Shaw and Tri-Pac.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Sheila Nizgowski?
Thank you, President White. I just had one question and I was trying to look through my notes from last week, but the other, you said you had 50 temps. The current employees that you have, is there benefits offered to them like health insurance or retirement, anything like that from your company?
Well, we offer life insurance. So, every employee has life insurance automatically because they're part of our company. They have health insurance that I think based on the current, current healthcare requirements, they have an option to opt out, but I think we have a lot of our employees on healthcare, on our health insurance. I know we offer 401K with a 3% match, but again, I think it's, it's based upon the employee if they want to take advantage of that savings plan or not. We do have financial planners who actually have a yearly meeting with our employees and teach them and try to make them fiscally responsible and try to help them with their savings plans and try to ensure that they're not fully dependent on the social benefits that our state offers. And then I know some of the other things that we did actually, especially during COVID and still ongoing is we actually offer free meals on site. So, since I think February, we've been offering free lunches to every employee in our company. And then if they're running longer shifts, then they also get free dinners. So, just some of the benefits of working as a part of our team.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Councilmembers, any other comments, questions? If not, I would now like to entertain a motion in regards to Resolution 20-32.
Councilmember White, or President White, first of all, I'd like to just say that maybe I can get a job application, but, because all those free meals sound nice, but I would like to move that, that this be passed on to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Is there a second? A second. Is it moving second? Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Tezka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
I'm gonna say aye, but I'm also, I noticed Attorney Palmer has his hands up. I'm sorry to interrupt. This, this resolution will be passed on this vote, not moved with a recommendation. So, the proper, proper motion is to pass 2032 with a second and then a roll call vote.
So, do we need to go back and redo that, Mr. Buckenmeyer, please?
I'll rescind the motion that I had made previously and, and then move that we pass Bill 2032.
And I know we have seconded this move and seconded. Now, Miss Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Tezka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Resolution 20-32 has been adopted. Now, I would like to entertain a motion regarding Resolution 20-34. See, Mr. Palmer, your hand's still up? Mr. Palmer?
My, my mistake, sorry.
No problem. That's all right. I would now entertain a motion regarding Resolution 20-34.
I'd like to move, make a motion that we move Resolution 2034 forward for passage.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moving seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Nizgowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tezka?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Resolution 20-34 has been adopted. I would now like to entertain a motion to dissolve into the committee of the whole. So moved. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tezka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgowski?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The committee of the whole is now in session. This is the, this is the portion of the council meeting where bills are given a second reading in public hearing. I wish to share with you that the bills that we've given a second reading in public hearing have been given a first reading and set for committee meetings and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is an ordinance, is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow by the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 3620 a second reading?
3620, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the South Bend zoning ordinance by repealing the designation of local historic landmarks, St. Joseph's Ordinance Number 127-78 for property located at 60649 Hickory Road, County Manic District 5, South Bend, Indiana, 46614.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, there is. The zoning and annexation committee met on Bill 3620 and brings it for the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present? I ask that you state your name and address and share with us the key points regarding the bill that is before us.
I'm sorry?
Yes, I am here. Ben Moblen, 60649 Hickory Road, South Bend, Indiana, 46614. Some key points, basically, the South Bend Historic Preservation Commission and myself and our attorneys have come to an agreement on repealing the landmark designation for our property and we're, we're grateful for, for that. We'd like to thank the common council for, for hearing us and for bearing with us through the on and off part during COVID. The city clerk, HPC, Ms. Kennedy, Mr. Palmer, Mr. Dixon, thank you guys so much for all working with us to come to this resolution.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for the petitioner? Councilwoman Sharon McBride?
Thank you. I just wanted to commend both parties for coming to an amicable solution. And just for point of record, again, stating that I would like to ensure that we don't have this type of problem again. So, we'll get a better understanding from the city that they will continue to follow up as stated in the last meeting with the county assessor's office to make sure that historic properties going forward are on, filed on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other councilmembers with a question for the petitioner? Okay, this, Councilmember Jake Tezka, you have a question?
It's actually not a question, just a comment. So, if we still have questions left out there, I'll, I'll hold. Uh, it's actually not a question, just a comment. So if we still have questions left out there, I'll, I'll hold.
I, not that I can see.
Okay. So, uh, yeah, I would just like to echo, um, Councilmember McBride's, uh, I guess, um, statement that, you know, I'm glad that this could be worked out between the two parties and something that, um, you know, I think is, uh, comes to us with a favorable recommendation. But as the district council person, I would also like to, uh, just say that I believe that this is the right move, uh, and that we can, uh, hopefully, uh, by this vote, allow the Moblins to get along, uh, go along with their lives and, and, uh, and create a, a home that they can live in for, uh, for many years to come. And so I would urge the council to, uh, to support this measure.
Thank you, Councilman Teshka. Is there any other council members that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to, this time, go to the public hearing portion. Uh, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 3620?
Okay, I don't see anyone, uh, from the public, other than Mr. Moblin, who just spoke, uh, speaking in support or opposition of this bill.
All right, thank you, Clerk Jones. At this point, uh, the public hearing then on Bill 3620 is now closed. Uh, council members, uh, do you wish to make any re, um, statements regarding Bill 3620? Seeing none, um, I, oh, did someone have their hand up, I thought? Okay. Then I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 3620.
I would like to make a motion that Bill 36-20 be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
A second.
Okay, thank you. Um, the bill has been, um, Clerk Jones, would you please, uh, call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you. Bill 3620 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Uh, Clerk Jones, will you please, uh, give Bill 4020 a second reading?
Yes. 4020, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, For Budget Transfers for Various Departments Within the City of South Bend, Indiana, for the year 2020.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Councilwoman. Um, Personnel and Finance heard this speaking in the committee meeting and, and had a public hearing on it, doing a committee, we send it to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, President White. Um,
20 budget, so this is our normal quarterly, the first of our two normal quarterly budget adjustment bills. So Bill 4020 is the budget transfer bill. Um, this is what the detail of that bill looks like. Uh, this, as, as we say every quarter, does not increase or decrease total appropriations. It just moves, um, budget between various cost categories within a single fund or between different divisions within a single department. So, um, happy to talk about any of these, these various budget transfers that council might have questions about.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Um, council members, do you have any questions for the petitioner? At this time, uh, seeing no questions, I'm gonna go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 4020?
This is Dawn from the clerk's office. I do not see anyone, uh, to speak in favor or in opposition of Bill 4020.
Thank you. At this point, the public hearing on Bill 4020 is now closed. Uh, is there any council members that wish to make a statement regarding Bill 4020? Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 4020.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move, send Bill 4020 to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay, the bill has been seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner? Councilmember Warner?
There it is. Aye, sorry.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski? Aye. Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Uh, Bill 4120, uh, Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 4120 a second reading?
Yes. 4120, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Appropriating Additional Funds for Certain Departmental and City Services Operations for the Year 2020 of $1,778,948 from the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, Number 202. $2,53,104 from DCI Federal Grant Fund, Number 212. $80,000 from Code Enforcement Fund, Number 230. $1,660,000 from the Fire Department Capital Fund, Number 287. $2,262,160 from the County Option Income Tax Fund, Number 404. $523,000 from the Major Moves Construction Fund, Number 412. $375,000 from the Solid Waste Capital Fund, Number 611. $36,000 from the Sewerage Works Capital Fund, Number 642. And reducing appropriated funds in the amount of $3,920,654 from the Equipment Vehicle Leasing Fund, Number 750.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair, the Personnel and Finance Committee had a committee meeting and public hearing on Bill 41-20. We send this to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, President White. Is the petitioner present, please?
Uh, yes, council members. Dan Parker again, City Controller, offices on the 12th floor of this bill, or on the county city building. Um, Bill 4120 is the second of the budget, uh, adjustment bills that we bring quarterly. This one is, uh, the additional appropriations bill, so this one is increasing, um, or decreasing the appropriations for the 2020 budget year. Um, as I did in committee last week, I'd like to talk about it just in two parts, uh, because most of, of the detail of this bill is related to what is essentially an accounting change and the cha, and a change in the way that we are accounting for, uh, our vehicle equipment lease. Uh, but the first, uh, part of this bill, uh, is three additional appropriation requests. The first one is, is $36,000 for a Bobcat at Organic Resources. Um, that's needed to comply with some new IDEM, um, uh, regulations over there. Uh, and then the, the following two, um, in, uh, the, the Community Investment Grants Fund, as well as in the Major Moves Fund, uh, for $2,500,000 are just essentially re-appropriating money that was in the 2019 original budget, uh, but was not spent until 2020. And so we're asking council to re-appropriate those dollars. Um, and then the rest of the, uh, the detail of the additional appropriation request is all related to a change in the way that we're accounting for the vehicle equipment lease. So we lease, um, most of the vehicles that we purchase out of governmental or tax-funded departments, um, are, are leased. And so we, we borrow money to, to finance those purchases and then repay them over a period of five years. Up until 2020, uh, we have accounted for those leases in a single fund, Fund 750, which is our, called the Vehicle Equipment Capital Leasing Fund. Uh, in 2020, uh, in accordance with State Board of Accounts Guidance and as well as generally accepted accounting principles, we think it's better to just account for those lease proceeds and the payment for those vehicles directly out of the departmental funds. And so essentially what all of these detail does is takes the money that was budgeted in, in Fund 750 and allocates it out to, uh, the street department, to, uh, the fire department, to the solid waste department, to all the various departments, um, that receive vehicles in the 2020 vehicle equipment lease. I'm happy to talk about that or any of the other additional appropriation requests that, that can slide our questions off.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Uh, council members, do you have any questions of the petitioner? Okay, I don't see any questions. So at this time, we're gonna go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 4120? Clerk Jones, do you see anybody waiting to speak?
I'm sorry, I was talking about me, but.
That's okay, thank you.
Um, I don't see anyone, uh, wishing to speak in favor or in opposition of this bill.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Um, at this point, uh, the public hearing on Bill 4120 is now closed. Um, is there any council members that wish to make a statement regarding Bill 4120?
Excuse me, is, uh, okay, 4120, I got it.
Okay. Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 4120.
I would like to make a motion that Bill 4120 be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Clerk Jones, will you please take the roll call on Bill 4120?
Yes. Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski? Aye. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Um, Bill 4220, Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 4220 a second reading?
Yes. 4220, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Levying Tax and Fixing the Rate of Taxation for the Purpose of Raising Revenue to Meet the Necessary Expenses of the Civil City of South Bend for the Fiscal Year Ending December 31st, 2021.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, the Personnel and Finance Committee met and committee held a public hearing on Bill 42-20. We send this to you with a favorable, uh, recommendation. And the public portion only in terms of the third reading will be held on October the 12th.
Thank you, President White. Is the petitioner present?
All right, yes, council members. Dan Parker, City Controller, offices on the 12th floor of the county city building. Uh, so Bill 4220 is the first of, uh, three budget bills that, as, uh, President White said, um, will be having the public portion, uh, this evening. And then the, uh, third reading will be next week at the council meeting on October the 12th. Uh, so Bill 4220 is fixing the 2021 property tax rate. Um, as I said last week in committee, uh, this is an important bill, uh, for council to actually fix a property tax rate. Uh, but the actual rates in the bill itself may not be quite as, uh, meaningful as, as you might first expect. Um, and so did want to just quickly run through the way the property tax rates are calculated. Uh, so the city of South Bend levies four, has four different property taxes that we receive. Uh, we have, uh, our general fund levy, our parks levy, uh, a levy that goes to our, to fund, um, and pay for, repay some parks debt that we took, uh, for the ISP Parks and Trails Initiative. And then our cumulative capital development, uh, fund receives a portion of property taxes as well. Um, these four different, uh, components of property taxes, uh, the first two are what are called levy-controlled. And then the other two components are controlled either by, uh, the amount of money that we owe in debt service, in the case of the parks debt, or, uh, are rate-controlled, in the case of the kinderlet of capital, capital development. Uh, the, what it means to be levy-controlled is that the, the actual, uh, the common council actually does not have control to, uh, raise or lower the rate. It's actually based on a formula that's calculated by the department of, of local government finance at the state. Um, and because both the general fund levy and the parks levy are levy-controlled, uh, that means the majority of the property tax, the vast majority of property taxes that we receive, actually 97%, is, is, is in that levy-controlled bucket. So it, so it helps maybe to, to talk about what that means really quick. Uh, the way that levy-controlled rates are calculated is you actually take what's called a maximum levy for the 2021 year and divide that by the, uh, the 2021 assessed value of all the property in our, in our jurisdiction. And that's what equals your property tax rate. Uh, when you look at those two components, the maximum levy and the assessed value, the maximum levy is essentially calculated by the DLGF, the Department of Local Government Finance downstate. And it, all it does is it takes the current year's max levy, the 2020 maximum levy, and multiplies it by a growth factor. Um, so that's just an amount of money that is calculated downstate. We don't have control. We don't set that, nor do we set the growth factor that's also set by the state. Uh, and for 2021, it is 1.042, so it's about 4.2% in 2021. Uh, and, and then if you look at the other value, the, uh, the other component of the rate calculation, the assessed value, is, is simply based on the, uh, assessor and, and the amount of the assessed value in our, in our community, uh, of all the property in our community. Uh, however, it's important to note that the rate that is in the ordinance that you, that you are looking at now in Bill 4220 is actually based on a, a value that is 80% of the current assessed value. So that is what the DLGF recommends. And so essentially what we're doing is we are really overestimating the amount of this property tax rate, uh, because what will happen is, yeah, rates are artificially high. Right, what will happen is, well, after the rates are artificially high, um, is they will be reduced by the DLGF in their 2021 budget order, uh, according to the actual assessed values that we have. Everyone's very excited about budget. I am too. And so that's how property tax rates are calculated. And again, that is, that represents 97% of the, the property tax rate the city receives. Uh, a very small component of that is, is actually what's called rate-controlled, uh, which is where the common council does have the ability to directly set the rate, but even that is subject to a maximum rate, um, based on, uh, the, the, that is calculated downstate as well. So, uh, happy to a, answer any questions on the actual numbers that you see in Bill 4220, but did want to give a little bit of background there.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Uh, council members, do you have any questions of the petitioner? Okay, seeing none, at this time, I will go to the public portion of the hearing. Clerk Jones, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition of Bill 4220?
This is Clerk Jones, and I do not see anyone, uh, expressing interest to speak in opposition or in support of this bill.
All right, thank you, Clerk Jones. At this point, uh, the public hearing on Bill 4220 is now closed. Council members can make any, do you have any statements you wish to make regarding Bill 4220? Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 4220.
I'd like to make a motion that we send Bill 4220 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and it's seconded. Uh, Clerk Jones, will you please read the?
Roll.
The roll.
Yes. Uh, Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski? Aye. Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Bill 4220 will be sent to full council with a favorable recommendation. Um, Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill 4320 a second reading?
4320, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Appropriating Monies for the Purpose of Defraying the Expenses of the City of South Bend, Indiana, For the Fiscal Year Beginning January 1st, 2021, and Ending December 31st, 2021, Including Including All Outstanding Claims and Obligations and Fixing a Time When the Same Shall Take Effect.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair. Bill 43-20, we held a Personnel and Finance Committee meeting on this bill as well as a public hearing and we sent it to you with a favorable recommendation set for the public portion only and third reading will be on October the 12th, 2020.
Thank you, President White. Is the petitioner present?
I'm still here. I haven't dropped off yet. But yes, so Bill 4320 is the actual 2021 budget ordinance for the city. And so what I did want to do is, and I won't rehash all of this because this has been a long process and, and, and I very much appreciate the leadership of Chair White as well as every council member in, in guiding the, the 2021 budget. We have had seven public budget hearings and so all of those are already done, as well as we've had three council working sessions, the last of which was last week. And so there has been quite a bit of discussion on the 2021 budget already. And so what I'm going to do tonight is just a brief kind of summation of where we've been and where we are on the 2021 budget and really organized around three pillars or tenets, if you will, that I think summarize the 2021 budget. The first is, it's, it's a budget that recognizes the fiscal challenges that we face, which are real and, and severe, but also a budget that, that sort of showcases the resiliency that the city has and our ability to, to weather the storm, perhaps, I, I think certainly better than many municipalities that are out there. And, and really, it's, it's a testament to the, the strong financial management and cash position that we've had up to this point. So it's, it's, it's one that, we're not in a, in a wonderful spot. It's not all rosy. There are real challenges that we're facing, but we are in a position where we can weather them over the next few years. And that rolls into the second of, of pillar that I think defines the 2021 budget, which is that really for the first time, or at least the first time in a really regimented and specific way, this budget is, is looking beyond just 2021. And, and that's out of necessity because of a lot of the idiosyncrasies in the way that we receive revenue, particularly income tax revenue, which is going to be one of the most, the hardest hit areas related to COVID. We really have to look into 2022 and 2023 and 2024 and really look three, four, five years out down the road to, to try and figure out how we're going to somehow get the budget back to a point where we have balance and operational balance where our revenues are sufficient to meet our expenditures, which is, which is not the case in the 2021 budget. And then the last pillar that I want, that I'm going to talk through is really strategic alignment. So those of you, and I'm sure I've said it to all of you multiple times, but those of you who've been around have heard me say it many, many times. It's sort of a pillar or a motto of our department in that resource allocation follows strategic priorities. And so that's really what we try to do is we try to identify our strategic priorities of council, strategic priorities of, of the administration. But ultimately, what we're all trying to do is identify the strategic priorities of, of the community and then allocate resources and invest in those priorities so that, that's how we dictate and allocate the, the limited and scarce amount of dollars that we have. So just quickly talking through this, again, you've seen all these slides before, so I'm not going to hammer any of them too hard, but obviously it's a difficult year for everybody and municipalities are, are no different. The 2021 budget is, is a very difficult one from, suffering from a revenue perspective related to coronavirus and, and I'll show the, the sort of projected revenue decreases here in a minute. But it's, it is, it is across the country, something that every webinar I attend or every time I, I call a, a fellow controller or treasurer on the phone, it's, it's top of mind for everybody. How is COVID going to impact the, the revenues? The, the need to do economic development in the community, but, and, and not just in 2021, but for, for several years to come. So it, it's very real and it's, and it's, and it's going to be here for a while. We're going to talk about the, those impacts. Fortunately, as I said, we've built a strong cash position. We're prepared to weather the storm. We also recognize that some of the initiatives that are needed to promote economic recovery, those are more important than ever. So even though we are facing revenue challenges related to reduction in income tax over the upcoming years, the, the need to continue to invest in economic recovery and invest in small businesses, invest in our residents and ability to sort of get through the difficult times that lay ahead of us is more important than ever, not just to, to help residents, but also because that is how we help ensure that income tax is able to, to continue to remain strong after the economic recovery. So if we can reduce the, the length of time of the recession that we see and, and shorten that recession, get everybody back to work, get the economy ticking again, that's how we help our, our revenues as well from the income tax side. So it's, even though we do have some severe revenue challenges, economic development is, is still plays a strong role in the 2021 budget. So just kind of hammering home a little bit more on those cash reserves so you can see, and we've talked about several times, the city does have cash reserve requirements for all of our funds or most of our funds, at least our non-capital funds. And we are far in excess of, of those cash reserve requirements. We've built up strong cash reserves to allow us to borrow cheaply, to allow us to, to issue debt with, with good interest rates, but really to, to really live through what we are now experiencing. That, that although having a good bond rating and being able to issue debt at low interest rates is a good side effect, the real reason why good, strong cash reserves are really important is, is for this, is, is for situations in which revenue is not guaranteed and revenue is projected to fall. And, and having those strong cash reserves allows you to continue to provide services, dip into those cash reserves a little bit over the short term and, and continue to maintain the same level of service. Now, as we've talked about several times over the budget process, that's not a long-term solution and real decisions do have to be made, but they can be made over a three to five year time horizon as opposed to really quick snap judgments that some other municipalities are seeing and having to do because they don't have that, that cushion of that, of those cash reserves. And so that's been really helpful as we put together the 2021 budget and the projections going forward. And then, as I said, the, the next step after we look at cash is to really look at where our revenue is. And we've talked about it several times, revenue really across the board is looking to, to decrease. If I could highlight just a few of these, the second line on here, local income taxes, looking at a $3 million drop in 2021. That's really half of the, the impact that we expect to see over the next two years. So we, we, as I said, there's some idiosyncrasies about the way we receive income tax where we actually won't feel the full brunt of the economic downturn until 2022 likely. But we wanted to spread the impact of, of that from a revenue perspective over two years so that we could really plan for it and make adjustments as needed in, in, in our operations. And same thing, well, slightly different on the charges for services side, you can see 3.6 million dollar decrease. That's everything from utility revenue, slight decrease in utility revenue is projected, as well as decreases in obviously things like the Century Center revenue, more performing arts center revenue, those kinds of, those kinds of areas. And we went through all of those different revenue decreases as we went through each of the departments. But very significant revenue challenges across the board, across many different funds are, are expected in 2021 and beyond. And, and that gets us, and beyond gets us into the sort of the second pillar of looking at this really beyond 2021. What the mayor talked about several times, what he calls a return to structural balance. So this graph has, has been up several times during the budget process and, and received quite a bit of discussion. But I think that this is really how we have to look at it. The red, looking at total expenditures and the green looking at total revenue. And so you can see there's quite a, quite a gap between those two in 2021 and that's where we see the 2021 proposed deficit of $15 million. But the goal is over the next three years to continue to reduce expenditures where, where possible and continue to sort of right-size the organization and then see the return of the revenue really in 2023 and beyond as, as the economy starts to recover. So that's the hope at this point, as we've talked about several times, that this needs to be sort of continuously updated based on new data. And obviously the numbers of COVID are not going the way that we want them to go currently. And so if that trend continues, we're, we're going to have to continue to look at this and say, okay, is 2023 recovery, is that, is that reasonable? Or do we need to start looking at pushing this out further? And then what does that look like in terms of our, our ability to return to structural balance? How do we adjust our expenditures accordingly? So this is, I, I, I really see as this, and Chair White has said this several times, I really see this as an iterative and continuous process where we talk about this not just in the budget season, but sort of continuously bring up, how are we doing relative projections? Is revenue looking to be where we thought it was from, from a projection standpoint? And if not, how do we adjust expenditures accordingly? We, we, the, the structure of the budget itself and how we allocate expenditures to, to try and maximize efficiencies and try to make sure that the prioritization or the allocation of resources follows that prioritization is something that we have talked about many times and actually structured the budget hearings around. So I won't go into it fully, but really the division between baseline and strategic spending and then even more so the division between strategic operations and strategic initiatives really showcases the, the, the fact that for one, most of our budget, 293 million out of the $355 million budget, roughly 80, 85% of the total budget is, is just maintaining our core services and really making sure that our, our residents are, are kept safe, healthy. It's running our waterworks, running our wastewater, our fire department, our administration, all of those things. And, and then the rest of it, the $61 million, is really towards moving forward those strategic initiatives. So that's where you see our investment in neighborhood infrastructure and investment in economic development and investment in really having a coordinated strategy around homelessness. So we talked through all of those various things through the budget hearings. But once you look at that structure, you can see based on the, the revenue of where we're at and, and the allocation of those various categories of spending, you can see what I alluded to earlier, that we are proposing for 2021 a $15.1 million deficit. And, and that deficit, which we've talked about a few times, is, is driven by a few different things. The first three of these I would consider to be very normal and expected really in any budget cycle where you have a capital spend that's anticipated, that's anticipated and intentional. This, this year happens to be in wastewater, but in prior years it's been in parks or elsewhere that is intentional and really spending down dollars that are earmarked for capital in, in a particular year. That, that is not concerning unless it continues year after year after year and those dollars are never replenished, which is not the case here. The second area that is, is driving the $15 million deficit that you saw there is just to spend down in reserves in some internal service funds that have been essentially over allocated in past years. Again, it's, that's intentional, that's deliberate and something that I would expect to see in, in several, or in a normal year that where, even if we didn't have the revenue challenges that we have from COVID. The, the third one on there is, is a little bit not concerning, but it's, it's, it's indicative of, of a difficulty that we have, which we've talked about many times, that the, the demand for additional dollars for road paving far exceeds the amount that we receive in from income taxes and elsewhere, or, excuse me, from gas tax and wheel tax. And, and therefore we have to supplement that, gas tax and wheel tax with income tax and elsewhere in order to, to meet the demand for street maintenance funds. And so while that's, that's a necessary and important spend down, that 2.5 million, it's not, it's not sustainable in the long term. Eventually, we will spend down the street maintenance funds, and actually we're very close to that, to their bare bones reserve requirement level. And, and then we will have to find another, another place for, for, to, another funding source to supplement the street maintenance activities that we have on an ongoing basis rather than spending down some of the cash reserves that we have. So that one starts to get a little bit, at least not sustainable in the long term. And then you get down to the true, what I would call operational deficits, the final two. And, and we've talked many times about the difficulties that we have in solid waste operations. And, and we are anticipating a $1.2 million deficit in those funds in 2021. And then the $5 million in, in the general plus funds is essentially the cumulative operational deficit, if you will, of the, the tax-funded departments. And so most of our departments, at least governmental departments, are tax-funded. So think administration, police, fire, code enforcement, economic, or community investment are, are your primary income tax or property tax funded departments. And so that $5 million spend down in reserves represents a spend down in those tax-funded departments and an operational imbalance in 2021 that again is the, highlights the importance of looking multiple years down the road to when the revenues can start to recover as well as expenditures can be right-sized back to structural balance. And then the last area to highlight is just the priorities. And so this is, this is a slide that the mayor took early on in the 2021 budget cycle, which is a summary of council priorities. The, the administration did receive the full detail of all the council priorities and, and we essentially put those into buckets and, and tried to, to highlight the, the areas that council in hearing from residents and constituents felt were most important in the 2021 budget. And we highlighted neighborhood infrastructure, economic recovery and inclusivity, housing stability and security. And then I, I thought this was, was very important and really indicative of, of councils thinking about the budget in a very inappropriate and, and meaningful way that a priority is really just to maintain the core services that we provide to the community and in the economic uncertainty that we have in the revenue challenge, challenge environment that we're in. I think that that's important to highlight. Fortunately, this mapped fairly well into what we heard from residents. So we did a budget survey online because of COVID. We didn't have our traditional meeting where we solicit feedback from residents in person, but we did do an online survey and, and found that the, these, these priorities for council mapped fairly well. Residents talked a lot about neighborhood infrastructure. They talked a lot about working with our police department and, and looking at public safety. They talked a lot about neighborhoods, roadways. Roads was enormous. Just probably the number one thing you heard in the survey was, was looking at roads and, and neighborhoods and infrastructure. One of the ones that I thought was very interesting but was very, very highly talked about was infrastructure related to water and wastewater utility. So maintain, save, reliable water and wastewater utility infrastructure is very important. And, and those priorities are really reflected in, in the, in the budget for 2021. And so this is, I won't read all of this to, to council because this is just a summary of everything that we talked about, but we are investing in all of these different areas, in the public safety area, looking at continuing the community paramedicine program, looking at expanded street outreach. And then with, with the ongoing negotiations with the FOP, looking at some structural adjustments related to police. On the infrastructure side, building reliable infrastructure. We talked a lot about the, the roads plan and the, the ability to reinvest and continue to invest more money in, in our repaving and redoing our roads. Talked about water and wastewater capital plans. And then also some, some, some increasing and, and expanding access to broadband and, and improving affordability of broadband internet. On the support economic recovery side, we talked about the new industrial revolving loan fund that the city got, received from the EDA. So another $7.7 million that we have available to loan out to, to new businesses to help them start in our community. And then also programmed into the 2021 budget assistance for small business, as well as assistance for minority and women-owned businesses to help expand opportunities for them to, to access city contracts and, and a lot of dollars available to, to provide, provide assistance to small businesses, especially minority and women-owned businesses. In the rebuild vibrant neighborhoods section, we talked about the proposal to, to issue a bond. And so we'll come back to council and talk about issuing a bond for neighborhood infrastructure projects. And, and then additional funding on top of that bond for, bond for neighborhood infrastructure projects, which should include roads as well. Additional funding for affordable housing through the federal government as well as local dollars as well. And, and the reorganization of the code enforcement department into a neighborhoods department to really align priorities there. In the expand access to opportunity, talked about workforce development and economic empowerment as well as the, the work being done by the diversity and inclusion team to really expand access for everybody in, in our community. And, and then, and the last priority that, that the administration put forward was protecting the vulnerable. And, and I think it's, it's right to say that this budget puts forward the most amount of local dollars seen in any budget in recent years for funding homeless, homeless strategy implementation, which is, is really working to, to, or will work. Those dollars will be available to implement the recommendations of the Working Group on Homelessness when, when those recommendations are forthcoming. And then obviously continuing to fund the Human Rights Commission and invest and, and expand the Human Rights Commission and the work being done there. So that, that's really a quick overview of what's in the 2021 budget. Obviously, there's a lot in there and, and we've been together for several months now talking through it. talking through it, but I'm happy to answer any questions from the public at this point until we, we have the council part of this next week.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Is there any council members that have a question for Mr. Parker? Okay. Seeing none at this time, I think we're going to go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or opposition to Bill 4320?
Hi, this is Dawn, City Clerk. There is no one from the public wishing to speak in opposition or in support of this bill.
Thank you. At this point, the public hearing on Bill 4320 is now closed. Is there anyone that would like to make a statement regarding Bill 4320 from the council? Okay, I would like to now entertain a motion regarding Bill 4320.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to send Bill 4320 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second. There has been a motion and the bill has been seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please take the roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Tezka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgavsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Bill 4320 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. We're now going to move to Bill 4420. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 4420 a second reading?
4420. Public hearing on ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating, adopting and approving the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation's 2021 budget and levying the tax and fixing the rate of the taxation for the purpose of raising revenue to fund the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation, South Bend, Indiana for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair. Bill 44-20 was heard under the Personnel and Finance Committee. We had a committee meeting and public hearing, and we send this bill to you with a favorable recommendation for public portion only with third reading on October the 12th, 2020.
Thank you, President White. Is the petitioner present?
Yes, good afternoon. This is Amy Hill, General Manager and CEO of Transpo. Address is 1401 South Lafayette Boulevard in South Bend, 46613. As a follow-up to our presentation with the committee, if it's the pleasure of the council, I'll just go ahead and, and jump right into the presentation. All right, slide please. Just a very brief overview of the organization. We currently employ about 118 employees. About 80 of those are represented by the Amalgamated Transit Union. We receive funding on a local, state and federal level, which we will go into as we present an overview of the 2021 budget. We currently operate a fleet of 47 fixed route buses and 22 paratransit buses, and we serve the cities of South Bend and Mishawaka. Next slide, please. I'm taking a look at 2020. We were coming off a great year, wrapping up 2019. We were, saw five consecutive months of increased ridership heading into March of this year. Obviously, that changed when COVID-19 hit, and I'll touch on some of those challenges. We have been focusing on completing a strategic planning process that will wrap up towards the end of this year. We look forward to implementing that in 2021. As part of that process, we completed our first customer survey, which was the first survey done in about 10 years. So we had great feedback from our ridership, and that's something we plan to continue doing on a regular basis. We also completed our collective bargaining sessions. We came to an agreement on a paratransit contract in February of this year and then fixed route and maintenance contract in August of this year. Next slide. We've had longstanding ridership programs with a lot of the colleges and universities in the area. We were able to expand on that. We ran a successful pilot program with the South Bend Community School Corporation. We provided over 30,000, 33,000 rides for high school students. That is now a permanent program where high school students can utilize Transpo as an alternative means of transportation to and from school, other activities, jobs, that sort of thing. The school corporation has then billed a discounted rate per ride, so we're excited to launch that as we head back into in-person classes. Also expanded access for school city of Mishawaka as well as a new program with Purdue Polytechnic High School, and we continue to work with the city of South Bend's ride guarantee program. Next slide. Certainly, there's been some significant challenges with COVID-19. We saw an immediate impact in March. At the worst, our ridership was down about 80% on both the fixed route and paratransit side. As a result, we did temporarily go to a reduced service schedule that ran from April 2020 through July, early July 2020. Basically, we were operating service, which is very similar to our regular Saturday service. We did resume service in early July. We are operating our full schedule. Ridership continues to be down about 50 to 60% compared to the same time last year. One of the things that we are most proud of, we did not have any layoffs or furloughs. All of our employees that had been available to work were able to do so. That's really been key in maintaining all, all our full service schedule. Certainly, a lot of safety measures have been in place. All PPE, we continue to make available for our employees. We provide face masks to the public riding the bus. We've installed protective barriers, hand sizing, hand sanitizing dispensers on our vehicles and our facilities. Next slide. We were very fortunate that public transportation was included in the CARES Act. We received about $8.5 million in CARES Act funding. That has been critical in maintaining our operations and keeping our employees working. You can see the breakdown. We'll be able to acquire some much-needed replacement vehicles, both on the fixed route and paratransit side. And again, this money will be key in helping us continue to operate our full schedule heading into 2021 and 2022. As we look at the 2021 budget, we're just over $10.7 million. As we take a look at that local tax revenue, that accounts for about 33% of our budget, and that funding comes from property taxes, excise tax and a local income tax. We did see a little bit of a decrease on the property tax side with the 2020 circuit breaker hitting us. And then on the state side, the state of Indiana has a public mass transportation fund, which funds all the public transportation agencies in the state. That is a line item in the state budget. We are anticipating about a 13% decrease heading into next year. There has not been any significant increases to that fund. There is certainly some concern long-term on the state level that we will continue to see that funding decline. On the federal side, a lot of that federal operating assistance is again through the CARES Act. We also received some additional federal dollars for preventive maintenance to maintain our vehicles and facilities. On the passenger fare side, we are predicting a decrease mainly because our ridership continues to be down due to COVID-19. We anticipate it's going to be a long recovery to build that ridership back up. One of the things I like to touch on, most people are usually pretty surprised to see that our passenger fares are such a small percentage of our budget. We charge a dollar to ride the bus. It actually costs us closer to $4 or $5 to provide that ride. On the paratransit side, the FTA allows us to charge double the fare, so that $2 ride actually costs us closer to $20. So every ride we provide is heavily subsidized. On the lease revenue, that comes from a parking garage that we lease to the city of South Bend, and then we have some space at our main facility that we lease to the Transit Credit Union. And then advertising and interest that comes from our vehicle advertising program that we have on our vans and buses. Next slide. On the expense side, as you take a look at it, it's, it's really pretty fixed. Our wages and benefits account for close to 80% of our budget. Fuel expense will be down a little bit heading into 2021. As we are able to replace aging diesel vehicles with CNG, we see that fuel expenses go down. In addition, diesel rates have been very low during this pandemic, and we were able to lock in that below budget rates for this year and heading into 2021, so that'll save us some additional funds. On the utilities and insurance side, we do see that go up mainly due to an electric rate increase. And then again, using additional compressed natural gas vehicles will increase our electric use as well. Services down slightly, that's really just the cost associated with maintaining our facilities. Materials and supplies, our vehicle parts, tires, that's remained pretty consistent. And then any miscellaneous expense would be any loan interest that we have and advertising and promotional expense. Next slide. As we look at our operating expenses over the last several years, years 2016 through 2019 on this slide are based on our audited financial statements from Crow. We've had clean audits each year. And you'll see that big jump up in 2019. That was really due to our pension fund for our employees and increasing those contributions to get that back on track. Next slide. On the labor expenses, we did see some increase in overtime back in 2018, 2019. With COVID-19, we've seen a reduction in overtime also during that short period of time that we were running a reduced service schedule, obviously had less overtime as well. So this is really flattened out, and we can expect it to be pretty consistent heading into 2021. Next slide. Some of our biggest challenges, replacing vehicles. We currently have 25 of our fixed route buses that are eligible for replacement. The useful life of a fixed route vehicle is 12 years. We are operating buses that are 16 to 18 years old, many of them with their original engines and transmissions that are close to going out. As mentioned with the CARES Act funding, we were able to order six replacement buses that will be here in first quarter next year. That CARES Act funding is 100% funding, so we do not have to match any local dollars for that, so we will not have any out-of-pocket expenses for those six vehicles. We were just also awarded an $800,000 grant from the city of Indiana as part of the Volkswagen Mitigation Trust Fund. This will be utilized as a local match for a federal grant that we had received back in 2018 that's going to allow us to purchase another seven to eight vehicles. Again, between those two sources of funding, those vehicle costs will be at 100%. And then we'll be left with about 11 or 12 buses that will remain eligible for replacement. So again, we'll have to work on acquiring additional federal and matching dollars to move forward with that. Next slide. As mentioned, there continues to be a lot of funding uncertainty on both the state and federal level. We also continue to see increasing insurance costs. We're very fortunate to be a part of the St. Joe County Health Plan that has helped to minimize some of our increases on the health insurance side, but we are seeing increases in workers' compensation as well as vehicle liability insurance. Ridership recovery, as I mentioned, that is going to be ongoing. You know, we're certainly doing everything on our part to ensure our ridership that it is safe to utilize Transpo. We have additional cleaning methods in place. We're doing everything to keep our community safe and build back up that ridership. We also know there's other needs out there. We know that there's needs for increased service throughout the community, especially later evening hours and also Sunday service. So that's something we'll be working on as we go forward. Next slide. As I mentioned with our strategic plan, there's a lot of opportunity for employee engagement. We're excited to move forward. One of those things that we're looking at is completing a comprehensive operational analysis of our whole system. We'll most likely work with MACOG on that, so we can do that on a regional level as well. Really taking a look at is our, our, are our current routes best serving the community or are there adjustments that we can make to even increase access even more? We'll continue to do our community outreach and partnership expansion. You know, we work with a lot of, a wide variety of groups throughout the community to make sure that we're providing the necessary access. And then certainly, we're working on recruitment initiatives. Throughout this pandemic, we have continued to hire employees. We're lucky that we have a very strong workforce. Many of our employees have been here 10, 20, 30 years, even more. Unfortunately, that means a lot of them will be retiring in the upcoming years. So really focusing on the fact that Transpo provides a great service to the community, but we're also a great employer and provide a lot of great opportunities for individuals to get into the public transportation industry. So working on expanding that and expanding our recruitment initiatives. We continue to be excited to serve our community. It's certainly been a challenging year, but looking forward to moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Council members, do you have any questions over the presentation? Okay. At this time, we are going to go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 4420?
Hi, this is Dawn, the City Clerk. There is no one wishing to speak in favor or in opposition of Bill 4420.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. At this point, the public hearing on Bill 4420 is now closed. Council members, is there any statement you would like to make regarding Bill 4420? President White?
Yes, I would like to thank Mrs. Hill and Transpo for their wonderful presentation, but also for the services that they continue to deliver for our citizens without which many of our citizens could not even find themselves a way to go to work. So again, thank you for your presentation, but also to thank you in terms of looking at strategic planning as you move forward as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Lori Hammond?
Thank you. I would also like to commend Amy Hill and the work that they do at Transpo. And I'd also like to just reiterate the fact that they are extremely creative in their approach, bringing in the high school seniors and allowing for increased ridership through the schools. So I want to thank them for their creative approach to transportation in South Bend.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond. Councilman Kenneth Lee?
Yes, I would just like to echo the sentiments of President White and Lori Hammond, Councilman Hammond. The, the institution of, instituting of Transpo being able for high school students to ride the bus with all of the critical issues that was happening in the South Bend School Corporation and, and the bus situations, I saw how valuable that was for our students to be able to ride the Transpo buses, to have a reliable ride to school. So thank you again, Ms. Hill, for all the work that you guys have done and the creativity that you have and have instituted in order for Transpo to be effective in South Bend. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Is there any other council members wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 4420.
I move to send to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay, there has been a motion and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please read Bill 4420?
Yes.
Or check the roll call, please, not read the bill.
I knew it's wrong.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tezka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgavsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Bill 4420 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. We are now going to move to Bill 3920. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 3920 a second reading?
3920. Public hearing on ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 316 East Monroe Street, Councilman District Number Two, South Bend, Indiana, 46601.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, the Zoning and Exacation Committee met regarding Bill 3920, and it comes to the council with no recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman McBride. Is the petitioner present?
Yes, thank you, Council Joe Molnar, zoning specialist for the city of South Bend with offices on the 14th floor of the county city building. I'm going to go ahead and share my screener so we can all look at the same thing. So this is a petition for a special exception at 316 East Monroe Street for a wireless communication tower. Here is the address outlined in red. Here is the address outlined in red. This is Monroe Street, just immediately southeast of downtown. Just out of the screen to the west would be Michigan and then Maine. As you go east, Monroe becomes, think in way east and curves south and east. To the north is the downtown public post office and to the south is the Monroe Park neighborhood. Here is the zoning, the zoning for around the area. So under the neighborhood center zoning requires a special exception to have a wireless communication tower. This is the site outlined here in white purple. To the north downtown, to the east and west immediately are other neighborhood center zones, which is a mixed-use district that allows for commercial, residential, and office. And to the south is U2, Urban Neighborhood Two, which is a mid-density primarily residential district. Here is a current site. This was a couple of months ago now when I went out and took this. The wireless communication tower that we're talking about will be just over here tucked into the corner. And it is listed as 189-foot monopole adjacent to the west side of the building on the petitioner's application. Here in the site diagram where it would be on the property. So like I said, a special exception has to be approved. First goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals and then to you for final approval. When we're talking about these wireless communication poles, it's important to keep in mind what the purpose is. So the purpose is to rehab this building for the WSBT radio operations. The building has been vacant for a number of years now. WSBT is planning on coming in, adding windows, rehabbing the building and getting the building back to operational use again. For examples of, you know, looking at this pole, which again would be here in the site diagram. You know, is this an appropriate place or not? Well, one thing to look at is where are our wireless communication towers in South Bend already? Within about a mile, mile and a half of this structure, there are a number of them. Western Miami, Mishawaka Avenue is sample. And then there's one in the heart of downtown, just patty-corner to the County City Building on top of WIT. The ones that like Mishawaka Avenue and Western Avenue have in common with this site is that they are along major corridors such as Western, Monroe, Mishawaka, immediately adjacent to the neighborhood. Very similar to how the Monroe Park Communication Tower is cited currently. With that in mind, the staff recommendation was approved was that this should be go-forward with a favorable recommendation for Board of Zoning Appeals. The Boarding of Zoning Appeals also agreed with us and has sent this forward to you with a favorable recommendation. One thing to keep in mind when analyzing, when thinking about these special exceptions is state law gives us guidelines to craft criteria for how we should look at special exceptions. It doesn't specifically say it must meet all of these, but this is how the Board of Zoning Appeals and yourselves analyze if a project of a use should be approved or not. Throughout the state, they're very, very similar throughout all the cities and counties in the state. They might have slightly different language. These are the general ones, but this is what we look at when we analyze a project. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. If the petitioner, a representative for WSBT is on the line, I'm sure they'd be welcome to talk to you as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Molnar. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? Councilman Jake Teshka?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just had a quick question. I know that council received an email from a nearby resident of somewhat of a rendering. I didn't know if there's a rendering of this tower or a picture of a similar tower that the petitioner had available for us?
I think I know the rendering you're talking about. I don't think that was generated by the petitioner. If they're on the call, and I'm not sure if they are, and if they are, they could answer that for you. But we've not seen an official rendering from the petitioner.
This is Bill Gamble, General Manager of the WSBT Radio Stations 6641, Dockside Drive, South Bend. Now, there has not been any drawing by the architect of the tower or the pole.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. President Karen White, did you have a question?
Yes, I would like the petitioner to give us a summary of the project that is before us.
Sure, the, you know, the, this is part of the rehab of 316 East Monroe. We are moving our four radio stations into the building. We are moving WSBT back to South Bend, as I mentioned to the council in a meeting previous to this. It'll be our 100th year anniversary in 2022, so we're looking forward to being back in South Bend. This pole, which is not a radio tower, it's a pole, is 189 feet. It generates two watts of power compared to the standard microwave, which is between 600 and 1,200 watts. This will beam a three-foot in width signal at 189 feet to our radio towers, which again are different than this pole on the south side of town, at Berrion Springs in Plymouth, where we have our transmitters. It is a critical piece of equipment because we have to get the audio and the signals to the transmitters to be able to broadcast.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council? Councilman Troy Warner?
Mr. Molnar, do you have the statutory criteria? Can you put those up for us to see?
Thank you.
This is how it's written in our ordinance.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Councilmember Kenneth Lee, I believe you were next?
Yes, Mr. Gamble, I would just like to ask, what do you have to say to the many people who are in opposition of this? And fear of it causing any problems or being a huge obstruction in their neighborhood?
Well, I'd say a couple of things. I think there's been a fair amount of misinformation distributed, not just to the council, but throughout the neighborhood. This is not a radio tower. Radio towers are very different than a monopole. This does not propose any public health, safety issue at all. There's also been the issue of property value. Now, I'm not a realtor, and it's not what my job is, but I have to believe having a business and a 24-hour business redoing this building is going to be good for Monroe Street and the entire neighborhood. You know, the pole, there are lots of poles and lots of towers, as it was pointed out earlier, on commercial streets in South Bend and throughout the entire county. So I hear what the neighborhood has said. I've met at least two or three, probably three times with the neighbors, listened and talked to them. You know, we want to be good neighbors. We want to be part of the neighborhood and part of the community. And we think having the hard ripper radio stations there will give the Monroe Street neighbors a significant voice in the community. Because we, as, you know, a broadcasting company, we do have a significant voice in the community. So, you know, I hear the concerns, I understand the concerns, but I think a lot of them are based on, you know, false information.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, next we have Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
This is a question for Mr. Molnar. If we as council members have concerns with one of the criteria, is it possible for this bill to move forward with eliminating one of those statements?
So your legal counsel would probably be better to answer that. I will say, so we did look into, Councilmember Warner asked that we bring up the criteria and we display it here for you. So we did dig into the state statute on this. Unlike rezonings, which is very clear and says that the four state, the state law criteria must meet all four. This just provides these criteria as guidelines for you to make your decision. It doesn't use the same language as it does for rezonings where it says must meet all the criteria. It just says that the council and the Board of Zoning Appeals should consider this criteria. So I think at this point it's either an approval or not. And if you don't feel it's appropriate, then that would be how you'd vote. But your legal counsel can ask, can answer better than I probably.
Okay, because these are stated within the language of the bill?
Yes, so they are, well, they're in the, they're not, I don't believe they're actually in the bill that's before you. They are in the zoning ordinance as the criteria that council and the Board of Zoning Appeals should look at and consider when voting and deciding on special exception. But it's not in this bill. I, I can-
I believe in section two of this bill, they are listed.
Okay, great, thank you. So then they are in the bill, so wonderful. So if you don't feel comfortable with one of them, then that's how, you know, I don't think you can remove one and then still pass it. I think, you know, the state law suggests this is the criteria looked at. It's clear in the bill, so that is, I think if you don't feel comfortable with one of them, I don't think you can remove one. But I guess, I think Bob would be better.
Mr. Palmer?
Sure, these are the statutory criteria. The council must make these findings in order to grant the special exception. So if the council does not find that the tower meets all of these criteria, the bill should be voted down. On the contrary, if the council feels that these criteria are met, then the special exception should be granted.
Excuse me, Mr. Palmer, this is Angela Smith from McNeve, Estinate, May I speak?
Yeah, sure.
I would just like to remind the board or the council, not to go against anything that's been said, but the special exception is assumed to be a permitted use unless the council finds that they don't meet the criteria here. So what we've always been trained by the state is that you would have to find, basically that they don't, that they're somehow going to cause a substantial injury or impairment to the community if they're approved. And therefore should be, the criteria is less important than a rezoning.
Okay, thank you. Did that answer your question, Councilwoman Hammond?
Loud and clear, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any other council members wishing to speak? Councilman- Councilman Lee?
Already asked my question, I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
And Council, President White had her hand up, so I'm not sure.
My question was answered as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then at this time, we are going to go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 3920? Please state your name and address, and you will have three minutes, and it will be timed.
Okay, I have speakers. I'm not sure if they're speaking in opposition or in support, but I have three speakers that have signed up. The first being-
Clerk Jones?
Yes.
I believe that Attorney Palmer had his hands up, and I think it's five minutes. Attorney Palmer?
Correct, President White. Just to clarify, speakers in the public portion of the hearings are allowed five minutes each.
Well, thank you for the clarification, Mr. Palmer.
Okay, our first speaker is Mr. Rick Tribble. Mr. Tribble, if you could unmute yourself and state your name and your address for the record, please?
Can you let Eddie go first, please?
Okay, Mr. Eddie Ferrero. If you could state your name and your address for the record, please, and unmute yourself.
Hi, can you guys see and hear me? Yeah, my name is Eddie Ferrero. I live at 517 Carroll Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46601.
Okay, you want to make a statement?
Yeah, I'd like to speak against the proposed tower, pole, whatever you want to call it. I'm not going to get into semantics, I have three minutes. My recommendation-
I have five minutes, sir.
I have five, oh, perfect. I would like to urge the city council to disregard the city recommendation on this tower. Just looking at the criteria, I'm not sure how any of this could be answered one way or another, given there's been no studies about property impact. There's been no studies about the impact on public health. I can take Mr. Gamble at his word that it doesn't have high wattage, but again, who's actually done any research on this, on behalf of this, from the city? As far as effect on property values, I think it's common sense. But aside from that, I have spoken to many realtors, since I'm not one either. And the HUD, Department of U.S. Housing and Urban Development, labels these types of towers as hazards and nuisances. And they have guidelines for how appraisers should look at the impact on marketability of nearby residences. So it's clear to me that this does impact property values. And my understanding is no one from the city's actually done any impact studies on this, nor the health. As far as it's consistent with the character of the neighborhood, it's right across the street from me. So those of you that are working from home, look at your window. You can probably imagine how I feel, but my feelings and my personal feelings aside, I'm looking at this from a community development standpoint for this neighborhood. As was said earlier by Mr. Molnar, it is predominantly residential. And I think that matters. The impact on the residential aesthetic is important. So yes, we have businesses here, we've got churches, and we have a diverse community. What I'm trying to do is help my neighbors and our association. And I'm sure that Mike will talk about this later. We have a development program for our neighborhood to get better. We've got high crime, we've had biker clubs and biker gangs, illegal nightclubs that have been raided by police, which was not fun to watch today. One of my neighbor's cars has a bullet in it in our neighborhood on, I believe it was Clinton Street. The neighborhood has a lot of challenges. And what we're trying to do in order to develop this neighborhood is attract families, working professionals like myself. This neighborhood is prime real estate. I don't think a lot of people realize that. People are afraid of this neighborhood, there's a negative perception. But where else in South Bend can you walk? To the farmer's market, to the library, to the Cubs Stadium, to the convention center, to all the restaurants downtown? Really aren't many, and I've lived in different parts of South Bend. Why isn't our neighborhood, say, isn't it thriving as much as, say, the North Shore Triangle? Why can't we Airbnb our homes for concerts when they come into town? Why are people afraid to come here? It's because the aesthetic of the neighborhood has a lot of challenges. I believe that flanking a residential neighborhood with multiple radio towers, and I, yes, I realize there are other towers in South Bend, I'm not sure adding more is a good thing, but predominantly among our neighborhood. I don't know of any other residential area here that has these many flanking it and at the entrance to a very main street to a residential neighborhood. Just imagine it was your neighborhood. What do you think the desirability would be for realtors bringing in prospective home buyers? If there's no way to get into your neighborhood without seeing a 200-foot tower? So my neighbor, Rick Tribble, did a rendering using his computer. If you see that on the chat, please click on it right now. Take a look at it and just get an idea of the scale of this thing. There's no way not to hide it. I'm also troubled by the fact that it wasn't discussed during the tax abatement meeting earlier this year. It seems like they quietly wanted this to pass without it being brought to the attention. Most of us didn't even know about this until the beginning of September. So here we are, we want to find a win-win scenario. What other alternatives are there to this tower? We've proposed some ideas. We haven't heard anything from the engineer about maybe using a small- We've proposed some ideas, we haven't heard anything from the engineer about maybe using a smaller tower on the rooftop, signaling to another tower, you know, another radio station, uh, tower. There's, there's got to be engineering ways that could be explored, none of that was done. And part of it is because the way neighborhood is defined is very ephemeral. Uh, I believe it's people and families. Um, I don't know why they only want to look within the confines of that little commercial zone lines. The neighborhood is much more than that, and we have a lot of challenges. We have a development neighborhood plan, like I said, where we want to attract- Oh, so then I'll just finish by saying, you wouldn't want this in your neighborhood. Nobody would, no reasonable person would. The perception by most people is those things are dangerous. Whether it's scientifically accurate or not is beside the point, I don't believe they're dangerous personally. But I'm thinking about the future of our neighborhood. Uh, the opportunity to have people here that are going to be able to walk and support a lot of these local downtown businesses. They will be affected too, if neighborhoods like ours are not allowed to develop and thrive. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. I'm trying to stop it. Okay, okay, our next speaker is Rick Tribble. Mr. Tribble, if you could unmute yourself and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Rick Tribble, five-two-five Carroll Street, South Bend, four-six-six-zero-one. Um, I also live right across the street from this building. There's a lot of talk about the tower and the building like they're exactly the same thing. They will continue using that building if they, if this is denied. They have done so much work in there, and they are set on using this building. So they'll figure something out, a different way of making their communications work if this is denied. Uh, Bill Gamble said in one of the meetings, that they could put it on top of a tall building, and length the two buildings, the, the building and the tower, on the tall building, but it would cost more money. So to save them some money, they're sticking a hundred-and-eighty-nine-foot tower, seven-foot wide, right in the middle of a historic neighborhood. And the historic district ends right south, it began, ends right south of their building. So it's right up against the historic neighborhood. Uh, I don't know of any historic neighborhoods that have a tower stuck in the middle of them like this. And the towers you see around town are not seven-foot-wide solid sticks. A lot of the towers you see around town are lattice-work type towers, and you can see through them. They're less, much less intrusive than this rocket. We don't need this in our neighborhood. And it's a convenience for them, but a burden for the neighborhood. And, uh, like Eddie said, there's, there's no independent studies stating that the property values might be affected. I, I don't know how they couldn't be. How much, we don't know, but it would be some. And there's no, there's no speaking about the possibility of it falling over. That's probably not very likely, but if it did, where would it land? You know, if they had some brittle steel and it fell over during a windstorm? There are going to be two six-foot top, two six-foot dishes at the top of this thing, and a four-foot dish, and then those aren't light. So I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mike Coleman. Uh, Mr. Coleman, please state your name and your address, and unmute yourself, you have five minutes.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Mike Coleman, I am president of the Monroe Park Neighborhood Association. I live at five-zero-eight East South Street. I'm speaking in opposition to the pro- proposed construction of the seven-foot diameter, one-hundred-and-eighty-nine-foot-tall radio pole unless some concrete steps are taken to help our Monroe Park neighborhood. I understand this radio broadcast company is investing three-point-five million dollars into the building and land at the corner of Columbia and Monroe Streets and Monroe Park. I have been told by both the City of South Bend and the radio company that this is a good deal for Monroe Park and that the company wants to be a good contributing neighbor. There's nothing concrete in the proposal of allowing a tall radio pole in our neighborhood, which helps our neighbors. We have a Monroe Park strategic plan in place, which needs to be both shared more broadly with the City of South Bend and with the various city departments. If the plan were more well-known, maybe a few targeted needs could be put on the table, which would help soften the opposition to a radio pole. The city did not help us this summer during our tent city crisis. The tent city crisis brought violence into our neighborhood. No one helped us. Volunteers and anonymous donor and Lori Hammond did help us. But now we have a decimated, empty B and V building property that has been stripped of all wiring and copper. We have an empty warehouse on Monroe Street. It was the site of a shootout with the Hood Rat Motorcycle Gang in late August. The South Bend PD helped us with that. And just this past weekend, we had several shootings and several car windows shot out on Feller Street and Clinton Street. Five of the seven blocks of South Street were paved last year. Why weren't the remaining two blocks paved or on the budget for this year? We're still waiting for the four-speed humps promised to help calm our neighborhood traffic. We want a park for children, which would include a splash, a splash pad. We want a natural way to access Howard Park where it's convenient and not dangerous to cross the recently repaved Monroe Street, Lincoln Way, East Road. We want significant upgrades and access to funding for all of the homes in Monroe Park, especially for the homes within our historic district, Taylor's Field. We want a better balance of owner-occupied home-to-renter landlords, at least a fifty-fifty ratio. We want the sidewalk repair and replacement program to continue and to be fulfilled. We want a Monroe Park Neighborhood Community Center. We want to help Mario Sims do something with his church. And with some, some support, maybe we can all work together to help him, help his building and help Monroe Park. We want to work with the city and strategically plan for all of these improvements and upgrades. We do not want to be told or to hear second or third-hand that the Millican Apartments will become an intake center for our homeless citizens or become a warehouse shelter for them. We need better relations and support from all the businesses surrounding Monroe Park. So I oppose the construction of a radio pole because I have not heard concretely how its allowance will help Monroe Park neighbors do the things we want and simultaneously guarantee a reduction in the violence happening to and within our neighborhood, which does include the lack of some clear ideas and solutions between the city and all the stakeholders in Monroe Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, Ms. Jones?
No, that exhausts our list of public speakers.
I'm sorry, I just raised my hand, maybe it wasn't seen.
If I just said that we have Daniel, uh, Buckenmeyer that would like to speak.
Yes, thank you, um, again, uh, Dan Buckenmeyer, Department of Business Development, fourteenth floor, County City Building. So I just wanted to review a few things, uh, for council, uh, briefly, and, uh, respond to a few of these things. Um, the, uh, just wanted to, uh, reiterate, we did, uh, in May of this year, mid-May, um, brought a petition, or actually petitions to council for vacant building, real property, and personal property tax abatements for Midwest Family Broadcasting and the four stations that were going to go in there. We did at that time discuss briefly the tower. It was, uh, a, a, um, uh, uh, clear, um, and, and, and obviated by the fact that it was a radio station, that, that there would be a tower, um, at the location. Um, and, uh, at that time, uh, city staff did ask a lot of questions of, uh, uh, Midwest Family about it. Um, had no concerns, and it was unanimous, the tax abatements were unanimously supported. It's a great adaptive reuse of a building that frankly, we never saw, uh, much hope, hope for. We, uh, uh, spoke to that fact. I mean, it is a, um, you know, I always feel bad calling their, their, their building ugly, but, um, they are here to dress it up, um, and, and we're excited about the outcome that, uh, it will be a much more attractive building than it has been for the last few decades. Um, the fact that the business operates twenty-four hours a day is another tremendous benefit, we feel. Few other elements, um, it is a, a, a three-and-a-half-million-dollar investment. It is about twenty-three permanent full-time jobs with a payroll of over a million dollars, uh, coming into the community. Um, there was a commitment in that tax abatement to create three more permanent full-time jobs within the next three years with an annual payroll of over a hundred thousand. I, I want to address some of the remonstrations because I, I want to make clear that, um, uh, you know, one, we, uh, uh, staff has taken a lot of time to review this. Um, staff are the council's experts in these areas. Um, and we have, uh, well, uh, in fact, just a week and a half ago, um, Bill Gamble, who you heard earlier, one of his employees and myself, um, said, uh, well, he was virtual, I was in, in person at a community meeting until, uh, nine PM roughly on a Thursday. So we've, we've, we've listened, uh, more importantly, we've tried to answer their concerns. Um, there are, uh, some things that, you know, aren't completely, you know, accurate. Um, the rendering, um, you know, a helicopter view of something, a view that no one will ever see, um, you know, no, none of us generally go craning our necks as we walk around South Bend, but, um, you know, I, I, I don't think that, um, rendering that's being shared is fair or representative. Um, it is not, uh, accurate that they would continue to use the building. This, uh, uh, installation is necessary, as we had noted in the, uh, tax abatement when we looked at it, uh, and, and proposed it. Um, it, it needs this tower, it is not a radio tower. There was talk of a HUD study, the HUD study was on radio towers. This is not a radio tower, this is a, a smaller, much smaller tower, utilized to shoot to the large radio towers that, uh, are in the HUD study that are the giant lattice, uh, uh, ones that, uh, were also referenced. What else? Uh, the, uh, so the, the, I, I want to make it clear that the tower is required and, and was discussed. And, um, uh, you know, I, I, I want council to, to be clear that, that, you know, this was, this was unknown. You know, and as far as this, uh, call for studies or looking at this as a community development, again, uh, you have experts across multiple departments giving this a positive recommendation for you. Um, the questions of public health have been asked, the questions of property value have been, uh, asked and, 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 uh, gone over internally. I mean, I, I have to say that, that, you know, I'm very excited about this for that community because this kind of investment, uh, will have a very positive effect on property values as opposed to a building that is vacant and, um, already has been an area where, you know, all the copper, everything has been ripped out of there, where people congregate and around a vacant building, vacant lots. Um, it is going to be a very positive thing for the city, it's going to be a very positive thing for the, um, uh, community. I, I think I'll just leave it at that right now, um, and, you know, I, I, I think it'd be fair to give Mr. Gamble an opportunity to, um, possibly address anything else that, uh, he would like to. Thank you.
Councilmember Nuzdowski? We have another person wishing to speak, Mr. Biff Wideman. Uh, Mr. Wideman, if you would unmute yourself and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, my name is Robert Wideman, and I live at five-eleven South St. Joseph Street in South Bend. Um, are you hearing me clearly?
Yes.
Thank you. Others who have shared reservations have spoken far more eloquently than I can, but I would simply like to, um, underscore several reservations that I have related to the request for special exemption use. One that's already been referred to is that the finding reflected in the bill, um, is that the proposed, uh, monopole is consistent with the character of the district in which it's located. And yet, it's been made clear that technically, in this case, the surrounding residential neighborhood of Monroe Park is outside the district under consideration. So this seems to be the practical reality. Area residents have been invited to lend their support to this exemption, but their point of view is not really considered relevant in the determination of what is appropriate to the district. It's also entirely unclear to me, as others have, um, mentioned, uh, on what basis the Board of Zoning Appeals determined that the proposed monopole would have no adverse effect on surrounding property values. I think what concerns me most is how the presence of a tower of this scale will impact the perceptions of potential home buyers and tenants. There's certainly survey data available suggesting that many buyers would carefully avoid purchase of a home near such a communication tower. Similar towers are described by housing researchers as disamenities. It seems fair to me at least to assume that the presence of a thirteen-story monopole will make it more difficult rather than easier to attract new homeowners and those eager to invest in Monroe Park. I'd appeal to the council to, um, defer action on this request to allow time both to ask what the fate of the tower might be in the event that Midwest Family Broadcasting should relocate in the future, um, and also to allow time to continue to investigate whether there are other workable en- engineering solutions that would not require a tower of this scale. And particularly, I would hope that, uh, commitments could be secured from relevant city agencies, uh, and Midwest Family Broadcasting to actively partner with the Monroe Park Neighborhood Association to beautify and improve the vacant property between Columbia and Carroll Streets in ways that are consistent with the Neighborhood Association Revitalization Plan and would, I think, be truly consistent with the character of the surrounding re- residential neighborhood. It seems to me that if we don't take the time to plan thoughtfully and consider the impacts of the proposed monopole, the primary gain for our neighborhood will be a massive unsightly tower, and really not a gain at all. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor or opposition to Bill thirty-nine twenty?
No, that exhausts our list of public speakers.
Thank you, um, the public hearing on Bill thirty-nine twenty is now closed. Um, I will now come back to the council members to make any statements they wish regarding Bill thirty-nine twenty. Clerk Jones, can you tell me the order? I seen a couple council members' hands pop up at the same time. I believe it was Councilwoman Sharon McBride?
And then you had, um, uh, Mr. Palmer, Bob Palmer, those are the only two that I see. Oh, wait a minute.
Chair, if I could interrupt for just one moment.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Gamble has a five-minute rebuttal period before the council.
Oh, yes, thank you so much, I am so sorry. Mr. Gamble, my apologies.
Thank you, you know, I, I had no idea I had five more minutes, uh, so if I could have gone on, I would have known. I, and I won't take five minutes, I mean, I, um, as, as, um, others have stated, we believe that Midwest Family coming into this building and this neighborhood and this Monroe corridor will be good for the residents and for the City of South Bend. As, uh, Dan Buckenmeyer said, um, it's a pretty ugly building, and we sort of joke about it. And we nickname it the bunker, it's an ugly building that the city has told us it probably would have sat vacant for years and years until they got around to demolishing it because no one wanted to buy it, but it works for us. It's in a neighborhood that certainly, as Mike Coleman stated, has issues. We, there was seventy-five thousand dollars' worth of equipment in that building that we had to trash because of copper being- to trash because of copper being stolen from around the property. We know there's issues, but our company has a history of going into neighborhoods that are in a developmental stage and being good partners. We did it in Madison, Wisconsin. We did it in Springfield, Missouri, and we hope to do it here. I mean, South Bend is our home. It's the home of the residents that, or the employees, I should say, that work at the radio station. And they're excited to be in this neighborhood and excited to be back in South Bend. So we think it's a good thing that we're coming. We do need a pole. We did have the option of putting a bigger tower, which most radio stations are a bigger type pole, but we chose the monopole because it cost us probably fifty thousand dollars more than your standard four-legged pole that's wider and bigger. We thought this is the best solution to butt it up against the building. I guess, you know, everything's been said. Again, I will repeat one more time. We truly believe that having Midwest Family Radio and the WSBT stations back in downtown South Bend is a good thing, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gamble. Okay.
We also, we also have, and I'm not sure Mr. Monar wants to respond to the previous speaker, but we have Mr. Monar who has his hand up.
Yes, I just have one minute, please, to clarify something.
Okay.
There was, and this was, I'm sorry, we didn't include this in our earlier presentation, but it was mentioned at committee and we wanted to talk about it. It was mentioned at the BZA by the public as well, fear of what would happen to the tower if it, if the company, you know, moved from this location or went out of business. There is a termination of use and removal, a section of the zoning organs that states that if the tower has reached the end of its use of life and has not been used for more than six months as its purpose, it should be, it should be brought down. So I did want, and the foundations and support structure shall be removed. But I did want to state that that had been mentioned in previous public hearings and so we looked into, and I did want to clarify that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Monar. Okay, at this time, Clerk Jones, do we see anybody else?
I don't see anyone else from the public.
Okay, thank you. Then at this time, I am going to move, I'm going to close the public portion of the hearing, and I'm going to move to council to make statements. And I believe that Councilwoman Sharon McBride had her hand up first, and then Councilwoman Lori Hammond.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Monar, thank you for reminding us of that statement because I had that highlighted in my notes for reference about the six-month, if it's not in use or the building, if the business is no longer there. So thank you for that. I would also like to state, I am right next door in the third district, and I have two one-hundred-and-eighty-foot towers right outside my backyard. And I also have the privilege of seeing the other tower in the other district. So I have three right outside my door, but I do believe that it has not affected any businesses or I haven't had any complaints from any residents about homes. And we are in a newer development right off of Pennsylvania Avenue in Bowling Court. So I just wanted to give some comfort with that, that I have some residents in my neighborhood that have not complained, just for the record, wanted to make that known and also that show that I am in favor of it because I do believe that it will bring some lucrative business and taxes back into the city. I'll yield.
Thank you, Councilwoman McBride. Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
Thank you. I simply would like to state that I think we would be grossly remiss in not identifying the struggles that this neighborhood has been facing over the last several months. And we find ourselves back again in Monroe Park asking for concessions from the neighbors. And I think as a council, we need to answer the question as to what can we do for this neighborhood to help to remedy some of the ill effects that they have experienced over the last several months. As a city, we need to recognize that they have been extremely diligent in putting together a strategic plan for their neighborhood, and they will need assistance in being able to accomplish those goals for themselves. And I think that we need to all make a commitment to pay back, if you will, for the sacrifices they made for the unhoused in our community and the self-sacrificing amount of time that they gave to that community. There has been a question raised about is there an alternative to this tower? And I didn't hear Mr. Gamble address that. So I am curious as to whether there are alternatives. And I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond. I believe the next council member is Councilmember Troy Warner.
Mr. Teshka had his hand up first, and then if Mr. Gamble would like to answer her, Councilmember Hammond's question.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, I heard a question.
Mr. Gamble, would you like to answer the question that Lori Hammond or Councilwoman Hammond has posed?
Yes. Are there other ways of getting this done? There are other ways of getting this done, but those ways, you know, they involve a great deal of time and a great deal of money. You know, the whole idea of having your own tower is so you can take your own signal and go back and not have to pay rent or lease or do something else with someone. And, you know, we haven't even begun to explore the technical challenges of doing that. So I'm sure anything's possible, but it would be a significant amount of money that, again, when we begin this project, was it planned for? The entire project figured we'd have our radio stations and the tower and be able to operate from there.
Okay, thank you. So I believe we're going to Councilmember Jake Teshka next?
That is correct.
Thank you. Councilman Teshka?
Oh, sorry, I hit the, hit the lower my hand, not the mute button. Thank you, Chair. I would like to just kind of reiterate here at the top what Councilmember Hammond said, that we recognize that this, you know, neighborhood has had a tough road this year and certainly want to give acknowledgement to that. I would say, however, that, you know, we have quite a few of these and other types of towers and communication apparatus, apparatae on the south side near my neighborhood. You know, we haven't recognized any sort of ill effects in terms of health nor home value. In fact, home values keep going up down here. And so I do recognize this as being the preferred way and perhaps most efficient way for WSBT to get their, get their signal relayed. And again, just a significant investment moving these jobs and rehabbing in this building and would hate to see us lose that. I do recall the conversation back in May or June, whenever we took up the tax abatement on this, that there would be some transmission devices as a part of this. And so, again, I want to empathize with the folks in the neighborhood, again, recognizing that they've dealt with several issues this year. But I do believe that the question before us is whether or not, you know, this special exception should be granted, and I'm of mind that it should.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Teshka. I believe we'll go next to Councilman Troy Warner.
Thank you, Chair. So to acknowledge, you know, and recognize that what the neighborhood has been going through and dealing with this year, I think we, you know, we have to look at the criteria. And when you look at those criteria, whether it's dangerous or harmful, we keep hearing about this HUD study. I pulled the HUD study up, and that actually talks about high-voltage towers and high-voltage radio transmission towers. Generally, you know, I've got a little electrical experience. Generally, you're talking about, you know, eight thousand volts or twenty-seven thousand volts, just to put this in perspective. This is two watts we're talking about. That's about the power that your cell phone uses is two watts, you know, compared to a sixty-watt light bulb. So we're not anywhere talking near the electrical magnetic field that is generated by a high-voltage tower or a radio transmission tower. And then the past week, I've been driving around and looking at these towers, and I never realized how many there are in South Bend. I counted over twenty of them. There's a couple in the fourth district, not too far from Notre Dame on Hill Street. There's two of them there. That neighborhood, the property values have gone up dramatically in the last five years. So I think if you look at those factors, I think they're just not there to deny this. I also think, really, we're filling a building here in that neighborhood. We're adding these tax dollars that'll come in from this building that's been empty for two decades, and the ability of the city to invest that, those funds in the city and in the neighborhood, I think outweighs any speculated devaluation of the neighborhood. And I get that it's very close to the commercial and the residential zoning line, but the towers I saw, they were all very close. Most of them had a house within forty to fifty feet, if not the next building exactly over. So I do worry about setting a precedence here on this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Warner. Next, I believe we have Councilmember Kenneth Lee.
Thank you, Chair. Listening to the concerns of the residents, they have been through a lot. They have experienced a lot of blight. They have, they've taken on some issues that many people wouldn't have taken on. So before we move forward, I just want to thank the residents of the Monroe Park for their resilience, for their ability to organize, and for their ability to try to have a clear vision for what they want in their neighborhood. I also think that, and because I'm a former radio person, to have WSBT move its radio stations back to South Bend, when they moved to Mission Walker, that was a, that was a big, big issue. So to have them move back to South Bend and to be in a neighborhood that, if they can work together along with the members of the Monroe Park community, radio stations bring a lot of excitement to areas. So hopefully, Mr. Gamble, that part of being part of the neighborhood and being brought to the neighborhood with a three-million-dollar investment in that neighborhood, which is something definitely needed, and to revitalize a dying building, I hope that the radio stations will work together to create things with the Monroe Park so that there is a tremendous benefit for what they're, for what's, 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 what they have gone through. So again, I'm a former radio person, and I know the excitement that radio stations bring to communities, and I'm hoping that WSBT will work with the members of the Monroe Park and let this be a great partnership and bring awareness to the wonderful area that Monroe Park is. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lee. Next, we have Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan.
Thank you, Chair Nuszowski. I echo many of the sentiments of my council members who have spoken before me, but I also just want to add to the conversation, the pool of knowledge, that I've received letters and have spoken to neighbors, about the same number of people who have spoken here tonight, but about the same number of people who have spoken here tonight, I've received letters and spoken to people who are in favor of this special exception and the relocation of the radio station in this building and in this neighborhood. And so I just wanted to add that to our conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tomas Morgan. I believe I also seen President Karen White. You had your hand up as well.
Yes, just have a couple of comments. Would like to echo a lot of the sentiments that my fellow council members have made in regards to the heavy lifting that this particular neighborhood, Monroe Park, has done during the last, I would say, the last eight months in terms of really dealing with a lot of challenges and really supporting our citizens as well as working together to come up with a strategic plan for their neighborhood. I think it is very important that as we begin to move forward, that our citizens know that one of our goals that we have proposed for our 2021 budget is that we will intentionally and strategically begin to look at neighborhoods that have been challenging and also neighborhoods that need additional support as well as working collaboratively with the various city offices. So this is a commitment that we've made as a council in regards to our proposed goals. And about two years ago, the Residential Neighborhood Committee actually spent a tremendous amount of time going into neighborhoods, listening to our residents. And so I want you to know that the work that you've done and also your commitment to ensure that the Monroe Park neighborhood is really one which that we can begin to work very closely with in terms of, from a housing, economic development, but also to ensure that it's a safe neighborhood, that that is one area that we will definitely be looking forward as we move forward, but also looking at all of those neighborhoods that are really struggling and need additional support.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, was there any other council members that I missed?
Sharon McBride has her hand up.
Thank you. I just want to, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge and say thank you to the Monroe Park neighborhood. They did a tremendous job and voluntarily, well, involuntarily, but taking on the homelessness problem that we faced and did a lot of work and commendable and like no other that we've seen. So thank you so much, and we're looking forward to the neighborhood plan and working with your Neighborhood Association as well to make sure that some of your goals are being met as well. I'll yield.
Councilmember Warner has his hand up.
I did hear that Mr. Coleman mentioned the speed humps for the neighborhood. I know I saw there's Public Works acceptance of a bid that those were accepted and that construction, I believe, was going to start any day.
Thank you. Okay, did Councilman Davis have his hand up at the beginning and I missed it?
No. I did, I did not see his hand up.
Okay. So at this point, I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill thirty-nine-twenty. I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill thirty-nine twenty.
Is I would like to entertain a motion that Bill thirty-nine twenty is sent to the council with a favorable recommendation.
I second.
There's been a motion and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please take the role on Bill thirty-nine twenty?
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Nay.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Bill thirty-nine twenty will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Okay, we're going now to Bill twelve twenty. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill twelve twenty a second reading?
Twelve twenty, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, adding Article One, Division Two, Sections two dash twelve point two point one two and including two dash twelve point two point eleven of Chapter Two of the South Bend Municipal Code to create a Community Police Review Board and procedures governing the board.
President White?
Yes, I do have my hand. I would like to, uh, to make a motion to hear the third substitute version of Bill twelve dash twenty.
Second.
Here's been a motion, it's been seconded. Can you take the role, please?
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
Councilwoman Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, this came before the Community Relations Committee at our last meeting and was moved forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman, um, Hammond. Is the petition present?
Yes. Um, Clerk Jones, do you have that PowerPoint?
Um, yes, there it is.
Okay. So, um, we have the third substitute bill for consideration. Next slide, please. Um, this slide goes over the makeup, basic makeup of the review board. There will be one member appointed from each city consomatic district. Next slide, please. This lists all the duties of the review board, including, um, collecting and tracking and reporting on the civilian complaints. Um, and making recommendations to the appropriate authorities, the additional investigation of the complaints when necessary. Next slide, please. So this is the basic complaint process. We have the flow chart, um, on the right-hand side here. What the slide states is that all complaints shall be referred to the Department's Internal Affairs for investigation. After any investigation is returned to the review office, the review board shall review the investigation and the action taken or recommended by the chief, if any. If the review board does not agree with the action taken or recommended by the chief, or if the review board disagrees with the investigation conducted by the department, the review board will notify the officer or officers alleged to have been involved in the complaint of incident of the, and the date of the incident. The review board may then, by majority vote, do one of the following, order the director to further investigate the allegations of the complaint, conduct an informal administrative hearing on the complaint or order the director to engage in a process of informal mediation to attempt to resolve the complaint. The findings and the disposition of the review board shall be communicated to the common council, the mayor, the Board of Public Safety and the complainant in writing within ten days of the date of the disposition. Next slide, please. So this gives us, um, some information regarding the duties and the selection of the director of the review board. This is part of the, um, third substitute bill, a new portion. The city clerk pursuant to Indiana Code thirty-six dash four dash eleven dash four with the consultation of the common council shall appoint a full-time director of the review office. The director shall be supervised and be subject to review and evaluation by the city clerk or clerks designee in collaboration with the review board and the common council. Um, the director is given the responsibility of setting up, um, the rules and procedures for the office. Um, subject to appropriations, the director shall have the authority to con- contract with investigators, consultants and legal counsel if approved by the city corporation legal counsel pursuant to Indiana Code thirty-six dash four dash nine dash twelve to aid in the investigation of complaints filed with or processed by the review office. Next slide, please. And this still does not show the corrections. I apologize. On that first point, the quarterly reports from the director shall be presented to the full council, not the Community Relations Committee. There will be an annual audit, as has been requested by the mayor, and the clerk's office will house all public records and issue, um, required meeting notices. Next slide, please. Attorney Bob Palmer, if you could, um, briefly go over the subpoena power and investigative authority again, please?
The subpoena power and investigative authority are two of the issues that, uh, the administration and the council have committed to continue to work on. Uh, we, the council firmly believes that the subpoena power, uh, is necessary in order to, uh, for the review board to do its authority, uh, to do its, um, duty. Uh, under Indiana law, the, uh, common council has the statutory power to investigate all employees and departments within the city. So the subpoena power would come under the common council itself. A common council would, uh, vote on whether or not to issue a subpoena based upon a request from the review board and a majority vote of the council. Uh, investigative authority, uh, the major change in the, uh, third substitute is that the investigative, um, uh, if investigative power is going to be invested in uh, another party outside the review board. For instance, if the, uh, review board feels that it needs to hire an investigator, that request will have to go through the, uh, uh, city legal department because the city legal department has the, uh, the statutory authority to hire any, uh, legal, um, authorities, um, uh, working for the city other than, other than what's provided by other, uh, statute. Uh, that's why the, uh, common council can hire its own attorney, uh, that's provided for by statute, but other attorneys would have to be hired through the city legal department.
Thank you very much. Next slide, please. The intention of the sponsors, um, is to partner with innovation and technology to create a website for the unit, Community Police Review Board and within that website to create, um, an information and transparency hub. Next slide, please. Um, our next steps will be to post the applications for board members on the council website. We're also, um, planning to work very hard with the city clerk for the selection process of the director of the review board and to begin to search for office space to house the review board office and the board meeting room. Next slide, please. This is, um, some excerpts from an editorial from the South Bend Previewment Editorial Board. Um, just to highlight it says, for years advocates have argued that it's critical to have a broader group of people reviewing police actions, a group that isn't appointed by one person like the Board of Public Safety to help increase trust between police and the community it serves. As we've noted in previous editorial comments, establishing a review board would be an important step in addressing questions and concerns residents have about a system from which they often feel alienated. Next slide, please. And this is a slide to thank all of the community members that have worked with the sponsors of this bill to bring it to the point where it is, um, today, including our two, um, endorsements that we've received from Faith in Indiana and the NAACP. Do the other sponsors have any comments that they would like to make?
Councilwoman Lori Hammond, I have there a few comments. Uh, most of my comments I made, um, at our last meeting. Would like to thank, uh, not only the various, um, um, stakeholders and community leaders and residents that we've met with, but also the common council and the administration. Uh, the third virgin, version of the substitutes reflective of a lot of input that came from our mayor and the administration. As you begin to look at, and those, uh, comments were from a statutory perspective. Indiana has a lot of, uh, of rules that maybe other states may not have. So as you begin to look at, uh, the authority over the citizen review board in terms of the program dev- um, um, program director, that is by state statute as well as with other, uh, areas that, uh, that you see within the third substitute. We will continue to work not only, uh, with, uh, the council, with the clerk's office, but also with others to ensure as we move forward that we have the very, very best bill that we can have, uh, for the city and also for the citizens that we serve.
Thank you, President White. Um, Councilman Davis?
I don't have anything to say right now. I will, I'll hold my comments until we get ready to vote.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so is there any, um, questions from council members? Councilmember, uh, Jake Teshka?
Yeah, thank you, um, Chair. Uh, this question is, um, I think directed at Attorney Palmer. And maybe you can help clarify, um, for me, a question that came up in conversation this last week. Um, with a, with a a subpoena that's issued through the council subpoena powers, what, um, w- w- what compels compliance with that? What, what is the enforcement mechanism?
Enforcement mechanism is to file a motion to compel with the, uh, say Joe Superior Court or Circuit Court. And then the court will either issue an order compelling, uh, compliance with the subpoena or, uh, or striking the subpoena and, and saying that it is not enforceable.
Okay, and, and so I guess as a follow-up to that, um, i- if we were to have to take that route as a, as a council, um, and then an issue comes down from the courts, um, is it then, I mean, we've been talking about this as an informal process, an informal hearing. Does it then become a, a formal hearing? And, and is the, um, uh, the, the person being compelled, being an officer or whoever, uh, then read, read Miranda rights and entitled to invoke their fifth and all, all those sorts of things?
If your question is if, if the court compels attendance at, uh, at a hearing by the review board, the answer is yes. Uh, the officer will, or anyone else will be, uh, entitled to their Fifth Amendment rights or any other constitutional rights. Uh, if you mean, is there a way to invoke Fifth Amendment rights in a motion to compel hearing? Uh, I'm not going to say it's impossible, but it certainly is, uh, would be very unusual.
Okay, I think, I think that answers. Thanks you, uh, thank you, uh, Attorney Palmer.
Thank you, Councilwoman Teshka. Is there any other council members that has questions? Uh, Councilwoman Tomas Morgan? You have a question?
Yes, I, um, thank you for bringing this to where this bill is today. I know there's a lot of hard work that has gone into this. Um, the third substitute bill satisfies a couple of my earlier concerns. Um, but I thought it helpful. Um, I asked it last time, but for the sponsors to answer again tonight. Um, the move from the, um, the first substitute to the second and third substitute was a move, one of the moves was, um, from the mayor's office to the clerk's office, uh, which satisfied, um, some concern about independence of the board. Um, could you just, could one of the sponsors just speak briefly to that and, and that decision?
Mrs., uh, Councilwoman Hammond, do you want to speak to that in regards to how that all came about? Uh, what, I could just share the beginning part of it and Councilwoman, uh, Tomas Morgan, uh, the other two sponsors can chime in. In looking at the state statute which was cited in the third substitute, there are only two, um, entities within, um, city government that can actually, um, supervise city employees, that being the mayor's office or the clerk's office. And so that was the beginning of those conversations. And then I'll turn it over to the, uh, one of the other sponsors who would like to chime in in terms of how that movement came about.
I'm a bit confused on the question. The reason why I couldn't answer, uh, right? So could you please, um, Councilmember, uh, Morgan, re- restate that question?
Sure. Um, my question was the, in the first substitute bill, the, the director at, was under, um, in the, in the mayor's office. And then in the se- second substitute and carrying over to the third substitute was the introduction for it to come under the clerk's office. So I just wanted to give all of you a, an opportunity to, to speak to that.
What, what, what are we speaking to? Just a change in the bill?
Yeah.
Oh, well, it, it's a process of, well, it's a process of making sausage. Uh, you participate in many different community meetings. We work with different organizations across the city of South Bend. We even, um, enlisted the help of the review, the review board president down in Indianapolis. And so after much discussion and putting everything together, we came out with what you see. It was a process. Uh, we automatically didn't, um, went under the mayor's office. Though we did one under the mayor's office. This was what shook out. The members of this, uh, community participated at a very high level in order to get this done. Uh, they showed up at community meetings. They had their own Zoom meetings. They got a number of things to compel the sponsors of this bill and our attorney uh, to say, hey, this is what we want to see. This is how we want it designed. And we did our best to understand all of their, um, needs and wants. And I think we came up with a very good bill. As you saw, there was a process. Um, you stated that in your question. Uh, the last part of the process, excuse me, was a bit more, was a little bit more difficult. And that was again, uh, speaking with the administration and on their, about their, um, some of their ideas and some of their, um, angst against the particular bill itself. Um, we had to make compromise. Uh, that's a part of making the sausage. And so we have a bill before you and the rest of the council. Uh, hopefully we get, um, favorable, uh, support. Hopefully we get favorable support, but it's just a process, you know? I think, and I spoke to this last time I was, we were here before we got hacked, about how great the two ladies that I work with worked on this bill and how well they were able to help craft a bill that could speak to every side that we spoke to. I mean, everybody didn't get 100% of what they wanted, and that's just a part of life. But most people have been able to walk away from this process and feel like their opinions and their words were valued. And I think that that's a win for not only this common council, the bill sponsors, but the city of South Bend as a whole. And I'm going to say this, and I'm going to end it with this. Our attorney is top-notch. He's one of the best, I'm sure the best in the city and the region, probably in the state. He's awesome. He has done a very good job of not only keeping things aligned legally, but also making sure that we understood where our powers were when crafting this particular bill. We are another institution within the city of South Bend. And obviously, that takes all hands, all hands on deck, all feet, all members of this community to do it. So I hope I answered your question.
If I could add just one last thing, I would like to commend and acknowledge the mayor and his willingness to continue to work with us even up to the 11th hour in identifying concerns that he had and helping us to find alternatives so that he could reach a point with this bill where he was willing to support it. And I think we have definitely reached that point. So I want to acknowledge his efforts in recognizing the need within the community for this to be independent. And he himself said that it will not feel independent to the community if it was in, under the mayor. So he wanted to make sure that was not something that moved forward, so.
Thank you, Spencer Hammond. I understood that too as a positive change, that it addressed some concerns about independence of the director and of this board. And so I merely just wanted the sponsors to speak to that. So thank you.
Okay. Are there any other council members that has any questions before we move to the public portion? Okay, seeing none at this time, we are going to go to the public hearing portion. And Clerk Jones, I'm going to let you take this part over because I seen a number of people that signed on. So if we could, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 1220? And those that wish to speak in favor of Bill 1220 will have five minutes and it will be timed. And please state your name and address.
Our first speaker is Emmanuel Kennedy. Mr. Kennedy, please unmute yourself and state your name and your address, and you have five minutes.
Great. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, good evening. My name is Emmanuel Kennedy from 311 East LaSalle Avenue. I'm a doctoral candidate at the University of Notre Dame in the sociology department studying race and social movements, and I'm also a member of the Black Lives Matter South Bend chapter. And I encourage you all tonight to vote yes on SB 1220. My support comes threefold. It comes from three different sources. The will of this community over the past six years in trying to get something like this passed, the hard work of the council and the supporters of the bill since January in putting this together. And also, I think something deeply personal to myself, my facilitator experience as part of the community action group meetings that were sponsored by the mayor's office and the Board of Public Safety. And I think about these meetings often because I think they met their intended purpose in some way, is that they allowed me to really engage in people in the community that I wouldn't normally engage with. But as I attended those meetings and facilitated those meetings for about 10 to 12 times, there are two words that really came up that really cemented into me what this bill is about, and those are the words trust and accountability. And so when I think about policing and when I think about the relationship that we want to have with our police and reform, the end game to me is what our community members have already talked about, and that is trust and accountability. And so it's the reason why the public came to those meetings with that, and they came with a certain level of angst because that is lacking in our community. I'm very proud of where we're going in our community, and I think we are making steps towards trust and accountability with the 21st Century CP report and the banning of the chokeholds. But to me, this seems so much more real than those because it finally, for the first time, the public has a seat at the table of this board. So, and I understand, your vote isn't a vote for perfection, but it is a vote for progress. And your vote is towards a commitment for the public to have a seat at the table. And to me, this is also a vote for the true principles of the democratic process, a vote for a continued walk towards a more engaged community that we can structure within our, within our municipal structures. Do we want to solve strain between police officers and the public? Well, how do we do that? We give the public a voice, and we give them a space for redress, we give them a space to enter in that process. But I also know that you all can't do this alone. So the implementation of this board, I believe, will require the continual engagement of the community and the continued commitment of the public. But it has to pass through you first. I imagine there will be a few dissenters for this bill, you know, people that, who lean hard into this reasoning that the public really doesn't understand what policing really entails. And the bill this making will make officers question their judgment in critical situations. But I'd have to argue against that. I don't think that's the case because the vast majority of officers actually will never have any interaction with this board at all. I believe, I've seen in a few meetings where Chief Ruszkowski presents this magnitude of calls his office takes and how a minority of them result in complaints. So basically, by the chief's own statistics, the vast majority of officers really have nothing to worry about. There are ones that, they're the ones that come in, they do good work, and they go home to their families at the end of their shift. But what this board does is that it provides redress for the public when it's necessary, but it also validates the officers that are doing the good work and provides a structure to support it. So thank you for your time, and on behalf of the people who either couldn't be here or were too intimidated by the setting of the speaker tonight, I encourage you to vote yes on SB 1220. This cannot be the end-all, be-all, but paired with the other initiatives like the police matrix and the use of force policy, we can really begin to seriously position trust and accountability as the nexus of our community. Now is the critical time for you to cast your vote in favor of this bill, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please, Clerk Jones?
Our next speaker is Harry Ray Murthy. Mr. Murthy, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and your address for the record, please, you have five minutes.
Hi, how are you doing? My name is Harry Ray Murthy, and I live at 18065 Bollard Road. I am a math PhD student at Notre Dame, and I am in favor of this bill and all the amendments that we're asking for. I really think that this ordinance for this community police review board will help us all, it will help our wonderful city of South Bend, and it will help the police department, and it will help the South Bend PD in building trust. The things that we're asking for are very, they are very common sense things that we're asking for. The 60-day period that is there for police officers and affiliated to file a plea, we should reduce down to 30. I think that the statute of limitations should be increased from 60 days to one year. That's very common sense stuff, and this will give the public a voice. This will, this should be a community police review board, this should be a truly independent review board. And it should be an independent review board, and police officers and affiliated should not be allowed to attend the meetings unless they're invited. There should be no conflicts of interest. I also think that in that vein, Councilman Troy Warner should recuse himself because he was a lawyer for the South Bend Police Department, and I think that's a conflict of interest. Also, I think that Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan, please do not delay this bill for voting again. I have a feeling that you are finding little things here and there as justification for trying to delay the bill passing past the point of the October 21 hearings, and I don't think that's fair. I highly recommend that you all vote for this bill. I also wanted to say that, like, we really haven't made this meeting accessible for us to attend. After all the technical difficulties last week, in which many of people that, people that were for the bill and against the bill, not just people that were against the, this ordinance, many people that were for the bill were not able to attend. And even after all that, it was not put, this meeting was not put on, be advised, it was just, it was hidden through some links in the common council page. And it was, this meeting was not given a specified time. I had to wait, I had to be on for three hours in order to come to this meeting, and so it was not something that I could ask some of my friends to come to. It was just a very inaccessible meeting, and something has to be done about that in the future. And so I highly recommend the passing of this bill and all its amendments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, could you read the next speaker, please?
Yes. The next speaker is Jerry Casey. Ms. Casey, if you could unmute yourself and state your name and your address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Unmute. Ms. Jerry Casey, I live at 421 Manitou Place and 46616. I would like to request that other people in favor of passing 1220 speak before me. Is that okay? Let someone else go first? Where was next on the line because I spoke last time?
Uh, no, if you are asking to stand in favor of the bill.
Okay, so here it is. I found, after our great conversations last week, last time, and also, we have participated, about 450 people we've recognized have participated in the hearings, and also we circulated a petition in favor of this community police review board. So the interest is very hot. And I thought it might be a good idea to start with the mission statement of the common council, which is, and I quote, "To make certain that our city government is always responsive to the needs of our residents, and that the betterment of South Bend is always our highest priority." It has been well established that there is a crisis of trust and many other things between the South Bend police and the community, most especially communities of color, most especially the African-American community. So passing SB 1220 is an important first step in challenging this reality and moving forward to another kind of reality. Now, I want to make it clear that we worked in good faith with a wonderful committee of the relations committee of this common council, and they also acted in very good faith with us. But I want to be clear that all the activists who participated are absolutely dedicated to eradicating the scourge of racism and in particular racist policing patterns in South Bend, and this is just one thing. I think I would like to make, I clarify, I think a little bit of a review of the history could help us clarify this, which is Sergeant Ryan O'Neal, on June 16, 2019, just a year ago, he killed Eric Logan. And every statement he made to the grand jury, to the press, to anything is absolutely suspect and should never have been allowed to be entered into the record. Why? This individual officer did not wear his body camera. That's against South Bend Police Department policies. He should have been arrested at that moment, all right? But he wasn't. He was, this grand jury, some shenanigans, decided that it was an appropriate force, appropriate use of deadly force, all right? Meanwhile, this officer signed, and we didn't know this at the time, the community's going to find out more about what happens when a police officer is charged with misconduct. What is their record of misconduct leading up to this one instance that they may be charged with? Okay? So here's what we know about Sergeant Ryan O'Neal. He wasn't found guilty for killing Eric Logan, but he was found guilty, two felonies and a misdemeanor, for double dipping, as in getting a ghost employment, getting paid from another agency in the city while he was making a full-time salary as a police officer. That's against the law. He also was found soliciting a prostitute while on duty, and cocaine was found in his blood, and he was caught naked fondling his genitals. Do you think an African-American man in our city would have been allowed to resign from the police force or just go without any trouble if those particular crimes were validated against that? All right, so here we have, Ryan O'Neal was allowed to resign from the police and go on and make his life. Meanwhile, he should be in jail today, all right? And meanwhile, Eric Logan is dead. So this is why people in the Black Lives Matter movement and the whole cluster of anti-racist folks in our city say things like this. I am Eric Logan. I am Breonna Taylor. And I am George Floyd. So that's very important. And I do believe that if the common council does not, I feel most people are voting in good faith, but if the common council does not support this thing, this bill, 1220, I'm concerned that it's going to erode the trust we've been carefully building between community members and the common council. That's one reason why the common council needs to be overseen by the clerk, Ms. Jones, because it keeps this body, this investigator body, and hearing basically truth and reconciliation stories of people, it keeps it within the common council because you are our elected representatives. The mayor has his board on public safety, the cops have their cops, internal police, internal affairs, and they have the fraternal order of police. Okay, so who do the residents have? We have you, friends. And I just want to say, any good cop should not be afraid because it's only about getting patterns of policing that's racist and problematic for those cops who are terrible. And it will give, this board, this review board, will give officers who are conscientious an opportunity to break that nonsense of the single line and have to be always together as the cops, and they will be able to address concerns they have about racist and sadistic behavior on the part of the police. This is a gift, believe it or not, to the police. Thank you, my dear.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, can you give us the next speaker, please?
The next speaker is Maya Perry. Ms. Perry, would unmute yourself, state your name and your address, you have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Maya Perry, 821 South Edison Avenue, South Bend, Indiana 46619. I'm here speaking as a member of Black Lives Matter South Bend, and I want to implore the council to pass 1220 to create a civilian review board without further delay. I have been truly inspired by this process and the council's engagement with the community. And this review board is the first step of many in holding the police accountable in South Bend. And my hope is that this review board will open up avenues of healing in our community and create a foundation upon which trust can actually be rebuilt. And so, which is why it honestly is concerning to me that this bill has had such strong opposition from the police and the FOP. They should be the strongest proponents of transparency and accountability if they truly believe that they are doing a service to the community, especially in this climate, and especially when many of them believe and have stated openly that they believe that issues in policing are individualistic rather than systemic. This will give them an opportunity to prove that to us. But nonetheless, I do want to say thank you to councilpersons Davis, Hammond, and White for responding to the needs of the community and our calls to action. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have the next speaker, Clerk Jones?
The next speaker is Mr. Paul Mishler. Mr. Mishler, please unmute yourself, state your name and your address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Hi, my name's Paul Mishler. I reside at 421 Manitou Place in South Bend. You just heard from my partner a few minutes ago. I teach at Indiana University South Bend and I'm a member of the Michiana Alliance Against Racist and Political Repression. And I want to start by thanking our sponsors who have worked long hours in discussion with community in trying to work out what is a possible bill and one that can be passed. And I want to thank the council as a whole for taking this very seriously. And I, I want to thank the council as a whole for taking this very seriously. My interest, you know, I, I, I'm a historian. I know that these issues are longstanding. This is not something that came out with the George Floyd killing. Um, there's a long pattern of policing against particularly African American communities, but also poor people in general, which is not useful. But South Bend has the possibility of not only healing our own city and putting our city on a healthy footing, but be, really being a model for cities all around the country who are trying to figure out how to address the very serious issues raised by the sort of mass response to the killing of George Floyd in Minneapolis. I think that people have, have talked about issues of trust, trust between communities and tr- and the police. They've talked about accountability for the police. And I think all that is important. I think that this is a step toward moving South Bend into being what a term they used to use a lot when they were supporting cities in this country was a model city for the country. We are a city that's poised to do something that's not only significant for us, but significant everywhere. And so I would urge supporting this bill, understanding that for many of us on all sides, there are imperfections, there are things that are clunky, there are things that we don't know how they're gonna work out in practice. And that will have to be worked out when the board is constituted. But as a step, we are saying as a city that you as re- as, uh, representatives of us are saying that we as a city have a commitment to have a better city, a better relationship between the police and the community, a better relationship between different communities that live in our city. And I think that is a heroic and special and important task that you have facing you. And I want to support that and urge your support for this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Can I have the next speaker, please?
Yes, the next speaker is Emily Nunnamaker. Emily, you, please unmute yourself, state your name and your address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Hi, I'm Emily Nunnamaker. I live at six oh five North Twickenham Drive, four six six one seven. I'll keep my comments brief, but I would like to speak in favor of having an independent community review, review board. Uh, I encourage you all to vote yes on this bill. I think it's common sense to have this review board. Um, it's kind of the least that we can do as a community to improve trust and accountability and to combat the systemic racism built into our city's agencies. Um, thank you all for your time, and that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Could we have the next speaker, please?
Yes, we have, um, Ms. Kay West Hughes. Um, Kay, you please unmute yourself, state your name and your address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. My name's Kay West Hughes. I live at two one six West Madison Street in South Bend. I live in downtown South Bend. And, you know, I have witnessed outside of my door an incident of police brutality. And it is not a pleasant experience. It is a very scary thing. And I'm so grateful to the council for taking the steps that they have had up to, up to this point to get this bill in the shape that it's in. And, you know, I, I said that last week. I'm just very grateful. And I, I agree with all the previous speakers. And one thing that I'd like to say is this, this bill can be a model, but also the process that was used to create this bill could be a model because I feel like you really did, um, bring the public in and integrate their concerns into this bill. There's a lot of ownership in this bill that I think needs to be respected. I think it needs to be passed. Um, and again, thank you so much.
Thank you, um, Clerk Jones. Could you please read the next speaker?
Our next speaker is Connor Malin. Uh, Connor, could you please unmute yourself, state your name and your address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Hi, I'm Connor Malin. I live at seven eighteen South Bend Ave, four six six one seven. And I'm speaking in favor of the, the bill in question. Um, so a lot of people have, have said a lot of good things that I'd just like to reiterate. This is a great opportunity for South Bend to, to lead by example. We should, you know, ask to have, you know, we, we should try to, to encourage favorable relations between, you know, citizens of South Bend and the police. No one likes to be stereotyped. I'm sure the police don't like kind of some of the stereotypes now that, you know, everyone is a bad apple and stuff. But unfortunately, a lot of the people affected by state police, bleh, police brutality feel the same way about stereotypes. You know, as a couple speakers ago said, this, this review board kind of takes away, you know, from generalization. It's aims to kind of specifically address, uh, specific incidents. So kind of, uh, you know, both, both as, as citizens and the police themselves should kind of encourage this, um, this bill to pass. So I, I encourage, uh, the council, um, to vote on this bill today because, you know, I'm sure we've all noticed, uh, the technical difficulties and have all been annoyed by having to push the meeting back. So I encourage we vote today. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Could we have the next, um, speaker, please?
Okay, our next speaker is Greg Campion. Uh, Greg, if you could unmute yourself, state your name and your address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Yeah, my name is Gregory Campion. I live at nine two five North Francis Street in South Bend, four six six one seven. And I'm speaking in favor of the bill. Uh, I encourage all council members to, uh, vote in favor of the bill. I, uh, want to echo the, um, the request that Troy Warner, uh, recused himself from voting, uh, due to potential conflict of interest. And, um, yeah, I want to thank, uh, council members and community members alike who have worked really hard for a long time to make this happen.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, the next speaker, please?
Actually, um, that exhausts our speaker list.
Okay. Anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Is this the total list of individuals who have?
This is the total list of individuals who have expressed an interest in speaking on Bill twelve twenty.
Thank you so much. I want to make sure that, that, you know, um, everyone has that opportunity. But I did not want anyone that wanted to speak, you know, favor or guess that they have that opportunity to do so. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now back to Chair Nizkowsky. Thank you, President White, for that clarification. So let's see. Okay, so at this point, we have heard everybody that wishes to speak in favor of or opposition to Bill twelve twenty. Uh, sorry, I'm getting a little. So at this time, uh, we are going to close the public hearing portion.
That's correct.
Now you go back to, uh, Yes, so council members, yes. Thank you, President White. Well, no problem. Council members, is there any statements that you would like to make regarding Bill twelve twenty? Uh, Councilwoman Sharon McBride?
I would just like to thank the, uh, sponsors for, uh, their hard work on the bill and everything that they have done to get it to the state, uh, the stage of, that it's at now. And, uh, appreciate all the efforts and all of the, uh, comments that we have gotten as well. So thank you so much. I'll yield.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, do you know who the next person was in the order?
The order that I have, I have, um, Councilmember Kenneth Lee being next.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Kenneth Lee, you want to make a statement?
Yes, I would just like to, to thank all of the, um, sponsors of this bill, with all of the challenges that we have. This is a very important moment and very important issue uh, for our community and not just our community, but for the nation. A lot of times when you, um, when, I, I've gotten emails from both sides of people who were against it and, and, and for it. And I just want to say that it is important that we understand that a house divided cannot stand. A city divided cannot stand. And when issues rise up like these, it's really an attack to try to fragment our, our, our community. We have to understand and know that if we're going to get to the place where South Bend is going to be a better place, we gotta do it together. It's gonna take everybody to save South Bend. It's gonna take everybody working together. Uh, accountability is not a bad thing. It just helps to build the trust that individuals have in our community. And then not every police officer is, is a bad cop. So we have to remember that and consider that. So I, I, for our community, I want them to know that a citizen review board is not an attack against, to, uh, not attack to separate our community. It's actually a move that can help us build the trust and accountability that most of us want in South Bend. And I just want to, I, that, that was, I, I want to thank you all. Councilman Davis, Councilman White, and Councilman Hammond for leading the charge on this. And thank you to my fellow council members who have been working very hard to tweak this. It's not perfect, but it is a step in the right direction. And so I just want to see South Bend be a better place. And I think, again, as we walk together and work together, we can eventually get to the place where South Bend will be a place where there is accountability and trust on both sides. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Lee. Next, we have Councilwoman Lori Hammond.
I would just like to extend a thank you to the community. Without their willingness to participate and their patience through this process, I don't know that we ever would have gotten where we are today. So, um, thank you for the trust that you've put in us and allowed us to work and take as long as we needed so that we could get this bill ready for a vote. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond. Next, we have Councilman Jake Tashka.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Uh, I would, um, like to recognize councilmembers Hammond and Davis and White for all the work put into this, uh, piece of legislation. Uh, I do know that it's been a, a long road. Um, I, I still have, uh, lingering questions about the subpoena power and, and, um, you know, the, the investigative authority, which I know was brought up, um, you know, in, in the conversations with the mayor as well. I, I also have concerns that, uh, in our last meeting, in the third substitute version of this bill, we, we made the training, um, aside from, from, uh, a ride along, um, recommended instead of required. Uh, and then there's some budgetary implications as well that, um, that, that concern me. But, uh, at all of those points I, you know, I've made in, in the previous meeting and, and, and some meetings before that. But, um, recognizing that, uh, you know, that I'm, um, outnumbered here, I would, I would also like to state that, uh, I am, um, uh, willing to, to work on this, um, with everybody, uh, moving forward. And, um, you know, through the, you know, the appointment process and whatever, uh, the next steps are, uh, as, as a council together to, um, uh, to get to this place where, you know, Pastor, uh, Councilmember Lee stated, uh, bringing the community together, uh, over this and not letting it, uh, not letting it divide us. And so, um, so again, I, I, I do have those lingering concerns. And, and again, recognize that, uh, that I may be outnumbered, uh, and, and commit to you today to, to work, uh, moving forward, um, to better the process.
Thank you, Councilman Tashka. Uh, our next council member is Councilmember Troy Warner.
Thank you, Chair Nizkowsky. Um, I, I support the creation of the review board I have from the start. Uh, I know during this process, I've, uh, answered, I've asked a lot of tough questions and, uh, I've not, uh, kind of given in to some basic assumptions along the way. Uh, you know, the, the law from New York and New Jersey and Florida and Illinois is very different from the law in Indiana. And just because something is done in another state doesn't necessarily mean we can do it here. You know, I, I still have some hesitations. There are issues with, with the bill, uh, currently. It's not perfect. I've got hesitations about the training, but I think, as I said last time, uh, you know, once we get this board up and going, they will tell us what training they need. Um, I think there's also, I, I disagree with, uh, our attorney a little bit on the subpoena power and investigative power. I think, uh, the, you know, a judge, those aren't answered questions. I think a judge may say that, uh, the state legislature has already created these powers for this purpose through the Board of Public Safety and someday may tell us that we have to use that method for the subpoenas, uh, instead of the council subpoena power. But, you know, these are things that can be worked out as we go along. I do think we need to be clear to the public, though, that this bill still has a long way to go. Uh, implementation is still gonna take a while. We don't have a budget. We don't have, you know, how many people are, are going to be hired by the, this, uh, by the director and how a lot of these little things will work out. But, uh, this is a, it's a process and we're moving forward with it. I'm comfortable moving forward with it at this time. I think the, uh, oh, the last point, I want to address a, a false statement that was made by one of the public defender or public, uh, speakers. I'm not a former attorney for the South Bend Police Department. Uh, I've never represented a South Bend police, uh, officer. Um, and generally, when I am in a role with the county police department, I'm usually opposite of the FOP. So, uh, you know, that, that was a false statement. But I support moving on this bill and I'll be moving forward.
Thank you, Councilman Warner. Uh, next, we have Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan.
Yes, thank you, uh, Chair Nizkowsky. I said these in my, uh, public comments, uh, last week, but I just want to share them again that reforming our public safety systems continue to be a top priority uh, for me, for the council, for the administration. This includes passage of a review bill, but it also requires a commitment to the other fifty-six recommendations in the twenty-one, in the Twenty First Century Policing Report that was presented to us this past summer. This is not a perfect bill, and I think Mr. Emanuel said it very eloquently, um, in the, in the public comments. It's not a perfect bill, uh, but I won't get, I won't let perfection, perfection get in the way of progress and compromise that has been made. There are areas of the substitute bill that still need work, as, uh, my council colleagues have, have pointed out. There are concerns that still need to be addressed. But I can support the, this bill with the understanding that, um, this bill is still a work in progress and that this council is committed to making amendments moving forward to strengthen the ordinance for a more successful review board. I hope the commit, the community will continue to stay engaged with any suggested amendments to strengthen the ordinance for a more successful review board as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tomas Morgan. Is there any other council members that would like to speak regarding Bill twelve twenty? Okay. Uh, well, I guess for myself as a councilwoman, um, Nizkowsky, I would like to say that I've kind of echoed the thoughts and sentiments of all of the council members I have heard thus far tonight in our community for that, for that matter. A lot of opinions. There, there's a lot of ways of looking at it. A lot of concerns that it's not all the way perfect yet. But there's been a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of input. Um, I think we all realize this is not a perfect bill, but I think we all realize that it is a work in progress as well moving forward. I do too have some concerns in reference to how do we transfer subpoena power to a board, to subpoena officers and residents in our community. Um, but I'm sure that that will be addressed moving forward. Um, and I also, uh, have some issues on the possibility of violating open door policy. Uh, when I hear that police officers are not welcomed at the meetings, uh, to one extent is it that we breach that open door policy? that we breach that open door policy. I understand during certain investigative measures, that may be so. Um, but I'm sure moving forward again, that all those little kinks will be worked out. What is important is that our community does come together, that we start to form those relationships of trust between the community and the police department. Um, so with that being said, I just wanna commend this committee for the hard work that they have done. Um, and moving forward, I, I know we'll be working on it, but as it is right now, I, I do intend on supporting Bill twelve twenty. So with that, um, I believe there was one council member left that has not spoke. If there is last call for anybody that would like to speak and wish to speak to Bill twelve twenty. Okay, well, seeing none, then I will entertain a motion regarding Bill twelve twenty.
Chairperson, that's the third substitute version.
The third substitute version, yes. Thank you, uh, President White.
I'd like to move, motion that third substitute Bill twelve twenty go to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
There's been a motion and it has been seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Uh, Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tashka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Ooh.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Bill twelve twenty goes to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Okay, I will now entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the whole and report back to the full council. So, okay?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tashka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. The full council is now back in session. This is the portion of our meeting where bills are given a third reading and action is taken regarding bills that were heard during the committee of the whole. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill thirty-six dash twenty a third reading?
Thirty-six dash twenty, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the South Bend zoning ordinance by repealing the designation of local historic landmarks, Saint Joseph Ordinance Number One Twenty Seven Dash Seventy-Eight for property located at six zero six four nine Hickory Road, Councilmanic District Five, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one four.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nizgatsky, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole?
Yes, President White. Bill thirty-six twenty was sent to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Council members, I would now entertain a motion regarding Bill thirty-six dash twenty, followed by second.
I move for passage of Bill thirty-six dash twenty.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Aye.
Last for a vote. Council members, are there any statements you would like to make? If not, Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tashka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill thirty-six dash twenty has passed. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill forty dash twenty a third reading, please?
Yes. Forty dash twenty, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana, for the year twenty twenty.
Thank you. Housewoman Nizgatsky, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding Bill forty dash twenty?
Yes, Bill forty twenty, um, was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. I'd like to entertain a motion.
I move for passage of Bill forty dash twenty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments from, um, um, committee members? Seeing none, Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tashka? Councilmember Tashka? I'll come back. Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Tashka?
Uh, uh, yes, uh, Clerk Jones, I'm sorry, I had, uh, some technical difficulties. Got booted off. Can you tell me again which bill number this is?
This is forty twenty, passage.
Aye.
Okay, President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Bill forty dash twenty has passed. Will you please give Bill forty-one dash twenty a third reading?
Third, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city services operations for the year twenty twenty, uh, one million seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars from the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, Number Two Oh Two, two million fifty-three thousand one hundred and four dollars from DCI Federal Grant Fund, Number Two Twelve, eighty thousand from Code Enforcement Fund, Number Two Thirty, one million six hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the Fire Depart, Department Capital Fund, Number Two Eighty Seven, two million two hundred and sixty-two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars from the County Auction Income Tax Fund, Number Four Oh Four, five hundred and twenty-three thousand from the Major Moves Construction Fund, Number Four Twelve, three hundred and seventy-five thousand from the Solid Waste Capital Fund, Number Six Eleven, thirty-six thousand from the Seawish Works Capital Fund, Number Six Forty Two, and reducing appropriated funds in the amount of three million nine hundred and twenty thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars from the Equipment Vehicle Leasing Fund, Number Seven Fifty.
I would now like to end, I'm sorry, uh, Councilwoman Nizgatsky, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole?
Yes, President White. Bill forty-one twenty was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I would now like to entertain a motion regarding Bill forty-one dash twenty.
I move for passage of Bill forty-one dash twenty.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any statements from council members at this time? Seeing none, I would now entertain a motion. I mean, I would now, I'll ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Tashka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill forty-one dash twenty has been passed. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill thirty-nine dash twenty a third reading?
Thirty-nine dash twenty, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at three sixteen East Monroe Street, Councilmanic District Number Two, South Bend, Indiana, four six six zero one.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nizgatsky, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding Bill thirty-nine dash twenty?
Yes, President White. Bill thirty-nine twenty will be sent to a full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion.
I'd like to move Bill thirty-nine dash twenty for passage.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh huh.
Thank you. Any statements from council members at this time? Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
I would just like to state that I don't think there has been adequate proof offered to support the statement that this tower will not impact property values for the residents of Monroe Park.
Thank you for your statement. Seeing a lot of statements from council members, uh, Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Tashka?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. I'm sorry, eight ayes.
Bill thirty-nine dash twenty has passed. Clerk Jones, would you give third substitute Bill twelve dash twenty a third reading?
Twelve twenty. So? I don't know. Twelve twenty, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, adding Article One, Division Two, Sections Two Dash Twelve Point Two. Two Dash Twelve Point Two Point Eleven of Chapter Two of the South Bend Municipal Code to create a community police review board and procedures governing.
Clerk Jones, move forward and ask everyone to leave for you. Thank you. I would now like to detain a motion to hear the third sub, Bill twelve dash twenty. I need it.
No moves.
Okay. It's been moved, is it a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Um, Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tashka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nizgatsky, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding the third substitute Bill twelve dash twenty?
Yes, President White. Bill twelve twenty was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I will now entertain a motion regarding the third substitute Bill twelve dash twenty. Council members, we'd like to entertain a motion regarding the third substitute Bill twelve dash twenty.
I move, uh, Bill twelve twenty for passage.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Are there any statements from council members before going to the vote at this time? Seeing none, Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tashka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Third substitute Bill twelve dash twenty has passed. We'll now go into Bill's first reading, as we've already have heard the resolution and we have taken action on those resolutions. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill forty-five dash twenty a first reading?
Forty-five twenty, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, setting the annual salary for the common council members for cal, for calendar year twenty twenty-one.
I will now entertain a motion to send Bill forty-five dash twenty to Personnel and Finance Committee for full council and public hearing, third reading for October the twelfth, two thousand and twenty. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tashka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Will you now please give Bill forty-six dash twenty a first reading?
Forty-six twenty, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of South Bend, Indiana, amending ordinance number one zero six eight five dash nineteen, fixing maximum salaries and wages of appointed officers and non-bargaining employees of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for the calendar year twenty twenty.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill forty-six dash twenty to Personnel and Finance for committee and full council for public hearing, third reading for October the twelfth, two thousand and twenty. So moved. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tashka?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, would you now please give Bill forty-seven dash twenty a first reading?
Forty-seven twenty, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, setting the annual salary for the South Bend City Clerk for calendar year twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to send Bill forty-seven dash twenty to Personnel and Finance for committee, uh, meeting as well as full council and public hearing and third reading on October the twelfth, two thousand and twenty. So moved?
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tashka?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill forty-eight dash twenty a first reading?
Forty-eight twenty, first reading on an ordinance to fixing maximum salaries and wages of deputies and non-bargaining employees appointed by the city clerk of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for the calendar year twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to send Bill forty-eight dash twenty to Personnel and Finance, uh, committee for committee meeting and full council for public hearing and third reading on October twelfth, two thousand and twenty. So moved?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Tashka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee? Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye. I'm sorry for press the button. I don't know what happened.
Uh, councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill forty-nine dash twenty a first reading? Forty-nine twenty. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, setting the annual salary for the mayor for calendar year twenty twenty-one. Entertain a motion to send Bill forty-nine dash twenty to Personnel and Finance Committee for Committee Meeting and Full Counsel for Public Hearing and Third Reading for October the twelfth, two thousand and twenty. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Councilmember Teska?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill fifty dash twenty a first reading? Fifty twenty. Fifty dash twenty. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, reaffirming ordinance number one zero five four nine dash seventeen and fixing the annual pay and monetary fringe benefits of sworn members of the South Bend Fire Department for calendar year twenty twenty-one. Thank you. Entertain a motion to send Bill fifty dash twenty to Personnel and Finance for Committee Meeting and Full Counsel for Public Hearing and Third Reading for October twelfth, two thousand and twenty. So moved. Second. It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Yes. Councilmember Nizgowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Teska?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill fifty-one dash twenty a first reading? Fifty-one twenty. First reading on an ordinance fixing maximum salaries and wages of appointed officers and non-bargaining employees of executive departments of the city of South Bend, Indiana for the calendar year twenty twenty-one. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill fifty-one dash twenty to the Personnel and Finance Committee for Committee Meeting, Full Counsel for and Public Hearing and Third Reading for October the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty. So moved. Is that the right date for us? I want to make sure. Yes. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Co- uh, councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Teska?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice Pres- I'm sorry, President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you so much. Will now move to Bill fifty-two dash twenty? Fifty-two twenty. First reading on an ordinance of common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, fixing maximum wages of Teamster employees for calendar year twenty twenty-one. I would like to entertain a motion, uh, to send, uh, Bill fifty-two dash twenty to Personnel and Finance, uh, Committee for Committee Meeting and Full Counsel for Public Hearing and Third Reading for October the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty. So moved. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Teska?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Could you, uh, Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill? If I'm not mistaken, I want to make sure, uh, fifty-three dash twenty? Is that where we're at? Will you please give that bill a first reading? Fifty-three dash twenty. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, fixing the annual pay and monetary fringe benefits of sworn members of the South Bend Police Department for calendar year, calendar years twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill fifty-three dash twenty to Personnel and Finance Committee for Committee Meeting and to the Full Counsel for Public Hearing and Third Reading for October the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty. So moved.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Councilmember Teska?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Clerk, Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill fifty-four dash twenty a third reading? First reading? Fifty-four dash twenty a first reading? Um, uh, uh, um, first reading, yes. Okay. Fifty-four twenty. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at eighteen thirteen Lincoln Way West, Councilmanic District Number Two in the city of South Bend, Indiana. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill fifty-four dash twenty to the Z and A, uh, Committee, Zoning and Analysis and set for Full Counsel for Public Hearing, Third Reading, uh, for, uh, October the twenty-sixth. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Teska?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgowski?
Aye.
Nine ayes. President White? Yes. Point of order. Do you know the dates of the APC meeting, the air planning? No, I don't have them right off the top of my head, but I can give those to you. I'll make sure you get those first thing tomorrow. Okay. Clerk Jones, I don't think I voted on that last. President White?
Area plan is the nineteenth.
Aye. Thank you. I would like to thank the council members, uh, for your, your time, your attention, your attention to the special meeting. As you could tell, we had a full agenda today and we will have another full agenda, uh, with the upcoming, um, council meeting this coming Monday. So I sincerely appreciate all your time, your energy. I thank our attorney for working, uh, not only with me, but also with the Clerk's Office to ensure that we met all of the requirements and guidelines to have the special meeting, uh, today. Would like to also thank, uh, Clerk's Office for all of their work and all their time to ensure that the proper documentations were, uh, developed and that also would like to thank our, uh, police officers for delivering, uh, that information for us. At this time, there, is there any unfinished business? Seeing none. Is there any new business? Councilwoman Hammond?
I know it's been a long night, so if everyone would be willing to just bear with her a minute. Um, there was a Voice of the People letter that was published on October third and it identifies, um, an issue in the city. It speaks of the lack of public restrooms and it identifies that the closure of the St. Joe County Public Library, um, fulfilled an important public health function, which was restrooms. So for many of the neighbors who are unhoused, the library not only functioned as our city's de facto day shelter, but also provided a safe, dignified and clean place for toilets, not only for the unhoused, but for women, for the disabled, for, um, caregivers with small children and with the elderly. Um, I think it's important that we recognize this, um, missing piece in our downtown, something that, um, is necessary to help prevent the spread of diseases such as influenza and colds, but obviously COVID. And, um, the author of this suggests that we do have time to create a pandemic savvy plan. So I would call upon the city and any of the city agencies that have any control over this to please take a serious look at what we can do while the public library is closed to provide appropriate restrooms and sanitation in our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond. Councilman, uh, Henry Davis?
Yeah, um, I. My question is, how are we making steps to get back downtown? Um, Councilmember Lee just said something about he just pushed the button. I say, yeah, you pushed the button. Cause this stuff is getting really, really more redundant and frustrating. And I've known the same. There are other bodies as well that are meeting, you know, regularly in place. So I was just wondering, uh, when are we going to be able to get back to some, some more? More, yeah, that thing.
I did email every council member last week, I want to say on Thursday, seeking your input and also a timeframe in which you would like to go back in person. And I'm still wa- waiting to hear from council members. I have heard from three so far. So all, uh, each council member, if you have not responded, please do so. And then we can start looking at the process and I'll be working with the clerk and with our attorney. I'm just waiting, Councilman Davis, to hear back from all the council members. But I did send that email out. It could have been thirsty. Uh, I know it was not froggy.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, well, thank you as well. Will now move to privilege of the floor. City Clerk, is there anyone waiting to speak under privilege of the floor? I do not see anyone waiting to speak under privilege of the floor. Thank you again. I thank our attorney. I thank our Clerk Office and her staff. I also thank each and every one of you council members. And, uh, seeing that there's no one waiting to speak under, uh, privilege of the floor, uh, this special meeting is now adjourned. Thank you so much. Stay healthy and safe.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, President White.
Thank you. Get some rest, everybody.
Yes.
Next week is coming. Take care.
Bye-bye. Bye-bye.